Microphones?
We will be. You ready?
Yeah, it looks like seven o'clock. Check, check, now we are. I'd like to call the order of the August 17th, 2017 regular meeting of the Redondo Beach Planning Commission. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Elder.
Here.
Commissioner Gann.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Um.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Toparo.
Here.
Chair Goodman.
Here. Commissioner Rodriguez, you'd like to lead us in the suite.
Sure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with never being justice for all.
Well done. Thank you. Does anybody have any changes to the consent calendar?
Is it possible to move the agenda item 12 and old business closer to the front of the meeting?
Make a motion?
I think we make a motion to move item 12, the public hearing for consideration resolutions, to, from old business to new business. We could move it up to the first item in public hearings.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, consent count, any other changes to the order? Good. All right, the consent calendar, anybody want to make a change or comment separately on the consent calendar item? Okay. In that case, I'd like anybody who wishes to speak tonight to stand up and take a quick oath. Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth, nothing but the truth and the whole truth? Thank you. Any ex parte?
Chair, Chair Goodman, can we get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
That's right, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See, I think last week we talked about, last month we talked about one and that just threw everything. Okay, any ex parte communications?
I've spoken with several members of the public, several people who've actually are speaking tonight, along with a council member.
I've spoken to residents and non-residents.
Residents and non-residents, yeah.
None.
Spoken to the population, residents.
Residents.
And I've spoken with several residents and with Dustin Moore of Main Street Strategies regarding ideas about how to deal with sales.
And Mr. Chairman, I noticed that you missed item four, audience oath. I don't know if you.
No, you did that.
Did we do it?
We just.
Wow, it was quick. There was I then?
Very well versed audience.
It was before you did number three.
Thanks for picking that, appreciate it there.
You might have been beamed up for a second and then brought back down.
Could have been. I guess you're ready to consider item number 12 then.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have a presentation this evening?
And motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairman, and Aaron, members of the planning commission. We're going to have our attorney, Jillian, present the item for you tonight. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jillian.
Good evening, commissioners. So as we're all aware, this item has come before the commission twice before. It was discussed first on April 20th, 2017. The discussions were surrounding personal marijuana cultivation restrictions, commercial, a temporary commercial ban to allow time for city staff to review all of the potential commercial avenues for marijuana uses within the city of Redondo Beach. Also, that commercial ban would need to go into effect prior to January 1 of 2018 in order to ensure that, that state licensure was not the only requirement in order to open a business within the city of Redondo Beach, essentially making sure that we had maintained local control of that regulation. We came back on May 18th, 2017, and were given some more concrete direction from this commission, which should be reflected in the two proposed resolutions before you tonight. As, as it says, it's allowing marijuana cultivation for personal use with the maximum of six plants, allowing delivery specifically of medical marijuana, and again, as we discussed, a temporary ban on commercial activities to ensure local regulatory control is maintained. This item, or these resolutions, were originally going to come before you at your last meeting, as I'm sure you're all aware. However, Senate Bill 94, which was the budget trailer bill, which, as it says up there, eliminates the distinctions between medicinal and recreational or adult use of marijuana, was passed and signed into law after the public notice went out for the hearing before you, and it required a change in, a pretty major change in the way that we were intending to regulate that the marijuana separately on a local level, it needed to be streamlined. And therefore, I believe a brief presentation was given at that meeting, at the August 17th meeting with regard to Senate Bill 94 and continuing this hearing to tonight. And so, your, the recommendation from staff and our office is to adopt the resolutions, which recommend the city council adopt an ordinance containing an interim or temporary prohibition on commercial activities, which would allow, which would maintain local control and allow staff to review all potential commercial marijuana activities. And to also recommend the adoption by the city council of personal, personal cultivation restrictions, six or fewer plants from a secure location, not visible to the public. And the third is a kind of a caveat or a specific exception, allowing for the delivery of marijuana within the city of Redondo Beach for medicinal purposes. And that concludes our presentation.
I have a couple of questions. Just all, is it typical to have the number of, I don't know how you say plural for whereas, but the number of whereases that this has?
Recitals. Whereases or recitals. So certainly, it depends on the type of regulation that you're enacting. Also, it depends on the way that recitals are utilized in the lawmaking process. Often, recitals are incorporated into the law. They are kind of the findings or purpose portion of a regulation, but they also can give a lot of context, or essentially what we would call legislative history, in order to show the intent of the body adopting the law, even where the law does not reflect everything that's written in the recitals. So as we had discussed at our, at the last meeting when I was before you, the, there's a necessity to ban all commercial uses of cannabis within the city of Redondo Beach, and the law will not read that that is a temporary ban. It will read as a commercial ban. The intent of some of these specific whereases or recitals is to show that that ban is intended by this body, and should it be adopted by the city council, by the city council as well, to be temporary. And that is essentially the legislative history that would support that contention.
So there's no way to have a temporary ordinance?
It's very, I, it's, there's not no way to have a temporary ordinance.
But some parts of this would be temporary and some wouldn't, so I guess I understand why that would be difficult.
Right.
But I was, I was talking about some of these clauses which don't seem to reflect the discussions that we had. They seem to be a large list of very negative things, some of which are assumptions, and I don't think they really demonstrate it, you know, the crime, and there's also one part to completely prohibiting outdoor cultivation, which is not something we ever discussed. And I don't know, we specifically, and you even mentioned reading earlier that to cultivation would not, we wouldn't allow cultivation, any plants, to be visible, and we specifically said the opposite. I don't know, I don't think my memory's wrong about that. I think we were pretty explicit about that.
Well, certainly, this is a proposed resolution, so should you wish for any amendments to be made, those amendments could be made.
Okay. Let's see whether I have any more specifics. The question about time limit, on the, on the delivery, you know, initially, we did talk about delivery immediate, allowing immediate delivery of medical marijuana. Can we?
Immediate?
Well, that was, our discussion was to allow that as soon as possible.
Right, so.
So forget immediate, I understand that.
Okay, sorry, I was like.
Something you want to put in the.
Right. So.
Before the meetings open.
Yeah, no, it's first reading, second reading, 30 days, we have a bit of a delay.
And this still reflects that, is that allowable, given the combination of?
So I did, I did review the SB 94, and there isn't anything that I found in, in my legal review which prohibits cities from differentiating local regulations based on medical marijuana and recreational marijuana, and so, or adult use, however you'd like to phrase it. The, the reason that there was a necessity to pull the resolutions that I had worked on, which bifurcated the two, and combine them, is because SB, for a number of reasons. SB 94, as we said, streamlined the two regulations, but also, one of the effects of SB 94 was to remove every single state definition that we rely upon currently within our medical marijuana definition section in the zoning code. And so, that issue, I don't have that in front of me right now, but it basically references each and every section within the state code. None of those sections exist anymore. And so, SB 94, when it streamlined the two different marijuana activities, basically completely deleted, or majorly deleted, all of those provisions, and the references were no longer applicable. And pursuant to that, and the fact that this looks to be an ever-changing landscape on the state level, the determination was made to adopt local definitions that are drafted into the, into our municipal code, as opposed to continuing to reference the state codes, just in case things continue to get moved around, as we kind of anticipate occurring, considering, I think, one of your blue folder items shows how many bills are currently before the Senate, and this is California Senate and Assembly. So that was one of the major reasons that we really had to combine the two. But, I know that's kind of a long answer, but the answer to your question is that SB 94 does not say that you cannot regulate these two types of marijuana activities differently, at least not in my reading or in anything that I have researched. So the, one thing that cities generally rely on is that the ability to ban is the most restrictive, and so, kind of anything up to that is presumably allowable, is within the local jurisdiction's determination. And should you wish to make that a specific exemption, I did create the definitions in here for medicinal delivery versus non-medicinal delivery. Those are not state definitions, those would be local definitions, that would allow the type of activity that, that the planning commission requested.
Okay, thank you.
And those definitions are shown on page seven of the draft ordinance.
Does all this actually go into the code?
I'm sorry?
All this goes into the code?
Yes.
That's why laws are so big and books are so big.
Yes, and as I said before, we tried to reference the state definitions, but of course, they get moved, and there was a lot of discussion about that, and I think that having our own local definitions just would make sure that we never have that problem, and we can always amend them pursuant to either state law changes or local changes.
Since, since there's no real applicant, and this normally is the time we could ask the applicant, would any, anybody on the commission have questions? Or Jillian, or anybody?
Open the public hearing, motion to open the public hearing?
So let's open the public hearing, and anybody who'd like to come up and speak, please do so, and.
Chair Goodman, I have some speaker cards. Oh, I'm sorry, this is item.
I don't have any, do you have?
No, that's for another item, sorry. I don't have any for this item.
Blue folder? Yes, there was one.
Was there?
Yes, yes, there was one. There was another. There was a blue folder.
No, I'm talking about speaker cards?
I'm talking about people who'd like to speak here.
Okay, yeah, because it was a.
We didn't receive and file, there are a couple of things here.
Function of receiving and filing?
No, none of this. None of this item.
There was one on, a blue folder on this item, I think.
There's one letter which is not included, which is at the beginning of the big packet.
Yeah, it was in there, oh.
On this item that we got this afternoon, we pulled it out. So wherever it is, we have a motion to receive. I'll second it. Any objection? So moved. Now we're ready for anybody who'd like to speak. So first come, first served, we don't have a list.
Pleasure to see you all once again. My name is Jonathan Svetko. I am appointed by the Board of Supervisors in LA County as part of their Cannabis Advisory Committee, to where we are currently writing recommendations for the board to write the rules for LA County itself. I have a wealth of expertise, both personally, as well as access to others that have written these state rules. I am offering that expertise to this city here. I am asking for an audience in regards to that as well, too, both to the city attorney and otherwise, where I think I can be of use for that. I applaud that you guys want to allow the delivery services so people can have safe access to their medicine. I will remind you that under Prop 64, that you are not able to do a ban against fully allowing reasonable access to the city itself to get this, which means that at the very least, they will have to have delivery services. I will present real quickly here, as you can see on weed maps. This clearly shows each and every delivery service that is currently going on, both in our city and the cities around. We have an opportunity here to where we can regulate, allow for safer access for our patients, allow for revenue streams to come in immediately, allow us to have sharper teeth for enforcement against illicit operators as well. And I have this plan that I would be more than happy to present to the city. And all I ask is just for an option or opportunity to be able to do so, and I would, I would, how do I put this, I would just really need the chance above all else for you guys to allow me to give this expertise out there. I've worked at this for quite a long time. This isn't something that we're just going to read off the state level, this is something we've worked on to actually create. And so, with your supports, if I can get that opportunity, I would appreciate it, because we have a great thing that we can do here in the city. We've got the voters' support, we've got a lot of stuff going on, we can make this happen, we do not have to wait for the state itself. The state is working things through, they've got their emergency measures, those will be coming out, however, there are guidelines for how we can implement on a local level. Thank you.
Let me just ask one question. So presumably, if we, if the city decided to go forward with some of this, then your information could be helpful in terms of determining how to implement or what restrictions.
Absolutely. Through a pilot program, through otherwise, there's so many proper ways that we can do this, to explore the opportunity that would make it safer for our community, and we would not have to worry about the risk of maybe overdoing this, to start off with.
Good, thank you.
Hi, Joan Irvine, District One, Commissioners' Staff. The only question I would have is that, as far as looking at potential, giving yourself enough time to investigate potential commercial activity in the future, is there a timeframe that can be put on that when you would review it? Because, you know, I think as you brought up, Tom, with the medical marijuana to delivery, that, that was banned, what, 1996 or 98, or something like that? And so that we make sure that, you know, the city gets a chance to, you know, review this within a reasonable timeframe, so.
That was our intention.
Yes, and I think the commission made that, that clear. I would say that one of the biggest factors is, we are most anxious to see how the state, and if the state, has any established program by the January 1st deadline. If they have good guidelines, a good permitting process, that will be very helpful. We're not confident that the state is going to have any of that in effect by January 1, and that's largely our rationale here, that we can see temporary permits, which we would not want to have to deal with, so.
Thank you. It's a quiet group. Anybody else like to speak on this? No? Move to.
I have a question for staff. So, on this, you're saying you're going to allow for delivery of cannabis for medicinal purposes, but not for non-medicinal purposes. What would prevent somebody from coming in, you know, he showed weed maps, what would prevent somebody from ordering it here and having it delivered here? If you're not able to, if you're able to reasonably regulate it, is that reasonable to think that you have to go out and they can't deliver within the city?
I would point out that the issue of reasonable regulation and reasonable access is neither specifically defined in the law, nor does it require us to allow delivery in the city. Just to clarify the point that was made earlier, I did some research on that prior to coming out here. However, the, the planning commission did request that we do a medicinal delivery specific exemption. In terms of how to regulate whether the delivery is medicinal or not, obviously, that would be a very difficult issue. I think a lot of, we, we put a framework in place here in order to create that exemption, and how to ensure that only medicinal patients are receiving deliveries as an, on an enforcement basis, it's, it's a difficult question to answer.
One, one of the assurances that we could provide would be that every business operating in the city has to have a business license. We would only be able to issue a license for medicinal deliveries at this point, would be a condition of their license. Should they be found to be acting otherwise, they would be in violation of our code. So there are a few avenues to regulate and assure compliance.
I would think we could also limit.
Right.
Who could do it. So in speaking with one of the fellows that I met, I referred to, he suggested that other people have had a specific program where one company was chosen to pilot it, so then you have more control, and it would, as he described it, it precludes anybody else from doing it. So you really only have one company you have to deal with, and make it easier and see how things work.
And that is certainly one of the avenues that we're, we're reviewing on a staff level, and also have discussed with specific members of, of staff and council as well. So yeah, that's certainly an option, is to have just one, so we have this definition of qualified delivery service. That definition could be that we grant one license, and so, the only way to operate legally within your license is to, to abide by the terms, which is that you can only deliver to the, to patients as defined by the law, and they, they would need to, they would be obligated to verify that. And should we find them in violation, we could either suspend their license, or we would have probably a hearing process for that, as well as obviously the business licensure process, enforcement process as well. So yeah, I mean, there are options in order to do that. In terms of exactly what the council would want to do, I don't know.
Thank you. Everybody's remarkably silent tonight. Well, I would like to see some changes before we move this ordinance forward personally, so perhaps we can look at, on, on the whereas.
Okay.
If we're going to make a comment, should we make it now before you do your changes?
Yeah, sure.
I think Dan has his light.
I'm a big fan of the light switch, sorry. So one of the questions I've had throughout the whole process, and I don't think anyone has a good answer for it, but if I'm wrong, I would love to hear it. There've been great feedback from the audience, from staff, from everyone, but the main, a lot of the feedback seems to revolve around whether cannabis is good or bad, what the, the impacts are, and because. And because this is legal statewide now, it's, it's, it seems that that argument's not so important. I'm trying to understand, based on other states' experience, if there's really been a difference between DUI rates, whether emergency room admissions, things like that, for cities who've allowed recreational sale versus ones that haven't. Are there any statistics on that to show that there's a difference in either usage or problems or anything else?
There are, but your, your current recommended ordinance does not allow commercial uses and activities. So we will have a hearing on commercial use and activity. At that time, we consider what regulation would be appropriate.
And then I see the Chiefs here, thank you for being here tonight with RBPD. I didn't know, has there been anything happening, you know, I guess medicinal, they're not cracking down at all, but at the federal level, there's talks of taking grants from sanctuary cities, things like that. Has there been anything at the federal level, and again, we're only talking about medicinal tonight, but any movement there against states or cities allowing cannabis?
I can answer that question briefly. I mean, the Attorney General Jeff Sessions recently requested the authority to regulate or to enforce federal law against medicinal marijuana, where, states where medicinal marijuana is legal. Presumably, that would extend to recreational marijuana, considering that medicinal marijuana has been legal for a great deal longer. If, if that, if that enforcement were to go to medicinal, it would presumably go to recreational. However, currently, the federal enforcement guidelines around legal state marijuana are under a, an opinion that was drafted by the Obama Administration, and it outlines a number of the, the federal enforcement guidelines that are in place now. However, that memo can be withdrawn or amended at any time. And so in terms of whether or not they are, that, that action will be taken, we certainly couldn't say for sure, but I would say, what, combining the fact that the federal government can kind of change their enforcement stance pretty much at any time with the change of that memorandum and what the Attorney General has said, that's pretty much our information at this point. To my knowledge, there haven't been concerted actions taken by the Department of Justice against states where this is legalized, and I, I'm on all the, I get all the news alerts, so I'm assuming I would know, but it's certainly possible that it has happened, but not, not to my knowledge. However, that's pretty much my, my information available at the federal level.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gann.
I think that we have to make marijuana available for our residents that use it for medical purposes. And I've talked to quite a few who believe in it very, very aggressively. I don't, and I support that, but I don't have a clue how in the world you would enforce who's delivering marijuana. We had a meeting before, and I know you have all the answers, I know you do. There was a fellow who was in that business who said he was making deliveries of Redondo Beach today. I mean, he stood right at that podium and told us so. So if somebody else has another idea how we can make sure that our residents who use medical marijuana for themselves and need it, have access to it, and, and can enforce it better, but I don't have a clue how you. If somebody drives into town and goes to somebody's house and delivers some marijuana, be it recreational, be it medical, be it whatever, I don't, I just don't understand how we could have any discussion about enforcement.
Well, the, the intent of the state is to create a, a database and an infrastructure called track and trace with regard to all legal cannabis products, whether medicinal or not. So to answer your question, to, to make that determination now, before the database exists, before the infrastructure exists, is very difficult. To do that, once the state enacts this, this track and trace system, will be a great deal easier, which is something that we have discussed, however.
If we allow the delivery of medical marijuana, do we create a tax generation event that's, that's taking place?
So the, the issue of sales tax would be something, that, so the sales tax that's charged would be very difficult to collect. In terms of levying a local sales tax on marijuana, all, all commercial marijuana businesses, I believe I, I told this, this Commission that the first available election, it would need to be, it would need to be a vote of the general public, because it is a tax. And the first election for that would be in June of 2018. And that's when the, the council could direct for essentially a, not a referendum, a proposition of, of, a referendum could be placed on that ballot for the citizens of the city of Redondo Beach to vote as to whether or not they want a tax, what type of tax they're looking for. There are square footage taxes, there are additional sales taxes, there are a number of different options. But that, that could not be levied specifically on a local basis unless it was voted, it was voted into place by the general public, and the, our first available opportunity for that is June of 2018.
And the only tax we could collect would be a normal business license for delivery service at this point.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mitchell?
So I think the, the elephant in the room here is, we have the ability tonight to move forward with your recommendations. The issue that I feel, most of us feel, including the public, is, yeah, we wait on the state, okay. We wait to create appropriate guidelines, okay. But if we're gonna wait till January 1st, isn't there something that we could do now to put together the appropriate wording of draft language so that we are not behind the curve, January 1st, 2018?
Absolutely. Work can start on that. Yeah, if, if, if the council directs staff to begin research on that matter, if, if the council decides or directs us on specific recreational, or, I'm sorry, specific commercial cannabis businesses, they want us to review, like, testing laboratories is one of the things that we have discussed, actual storefronts, deliveries, transportation, things of that nature. That research can begin immediately. But the, in terms of putting those regulations into place.
Oh, I never asked that.
Yeah, no, yeah, I'm just saying that, that, that's, the, this is the reason that we wanna put an interim or temporary prohibition in place to have the time. But yeah, those, those preparations on a staff level can begin upon direction by council to do so.
And the council can say, I'd like to have something put together, it's, of course, draft language. So by the end of the year, it's done and it's ready, and we're maybe 90% of where we need to be, and then we see what the, the state does.
Yeah, they can direct us to do that.
And we can direct you and the council by putting that language in as well, I'm assuming.
Not in the ordinance, but it would not be in the ordinance, but along with the ordinance, suggestions is.
So included in a motion to adopt resolutions, assuming we have a few whereas's to change, would be additional request of the Commission that City Council begin at least research or direct staff to begin research on those things you talked about.
But again, it's beginning, but also finishing, and getting it done, so it's, hey, it's not all the way there, but you're close. I think that's important. So anyway, that's all I.
That's, that's been the thrust of what we've talked about all along.
I know, but I'm just wanting to reiterate.
No, I agree, I agree. I absolutely agree. I'm just saying you're, you're just reiterating.
Yeah. I've done that before up here.
Well, it's, it's a good thing, because it sometimes gets forgotten, sometimes. I don't wanna overlook anybody else who may have questions, comments. Okay, so it's back to me then. So on the, the one change I'd like to see us, I'd suggest, because I think it's what we had talked about under individual cultivation restrictions and page numbers on the, oh, page 10. Open marijuana cultivation is not permitted. First of all, I presume that means outside, I don't really know what open cultivation means.
So that's, that's just a, basically, kind of a place marker. It's, it's supposed to be, not necessarily a definition, but essentially, it's supposed to clarify what this provision means. So that language can be changed. The intent of open, of, of the, the language is to clarify that it cannot be grown anywhere outside, right? So open marijuana cultivation is generally interpreted to mean anywhere outside, right? Whereas this, of course, as I believe we were directed to do, the cultivation is to take place in a secured location or within a locked structure upon the grower's own property or property to which they have explicit access to.
Right, but if you go back to a whereas clause, it kind of implies that you cannot grow it outside. It doesn't imply, it says that.
It says that we're, we're allowed to do that. That's, the, the intent of the language is to clarify what cities are permitted to do under the AUMA. So cities are permitted to completely disallow outdoor cultivation, except in a locked-out structure. They are not allowed to ban the cultivation of six or fewer plants per household.
I understand, but this is, when you read this, it's really, it really looks like that's what, that's what we want to have happen, so. So perhaps we can just make this, we can change the wording, because open cultivation, again, I read it as, well, you can't grow outside. And that's number two on page 10, which is not.
Yeah.
What we talked about the last couple of meetings we had. It was, you can grow it inside or outside, but it must be in a secure location.
Well, wasn't visibility a big issue?
Pardon me?
Wasn't visibility an issue? I mean, to grow it outside, you, you know, I don't think you should be able to grow it in your front garden.
No.
You know, on the street.
It's not secure.
Well, visibility wasn't an issue to me, actually. I have a bunch of podacarpus plants, and they look exactly the same, they really do. I was looking at them the other day, going, my gosh.
I read about that.
We have them all over the place. But I think, I think, well, at least I recall when we talked about that, the security was the larger concern, so.
So it, would the Commissioner prefer the strike, open marijuana cultivation is not permitted, and replace it with personal cultivation permitted in secured locations? Is that?
I would like to suggest that we do that. Okay.
One second, Matt.
All in favor?
All right.
All opposed?
Yeah, I like that. Wasn't there an issue, because you were talking about, secure could be in my front yard, but my gate's locked? And there was something, I seem to recall about a public nuisance, that if you can see it, even if it's secured, that it's still, there's still some issue with that?
So staff recommended that visibility be considered with regard to the regulation of, of marijuana cultivation, and the Commission voted that visibility would not be a part of the regulations, that we were, that is not what we were directed to come back with, as the Chair indicated.
But that's what's up there.
That is the staff's recommendation again.
Oh, okay.
It's not what's in the law.
So what we're voting on now is whether to change that?
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
Right.
So you can either go with the recommendation.
Take that out.
To change, to, to either, so as it, as it reads now, visibility is not a, a, visibility or lack of visibility, so to speak, is not one of the regulations or restrictions that's in the law. The way that the, or the, I'm sorry, the resolution. The resolution is drafted pursuant to direction from the Planning Commission. So it simply says, secured location or locked structure. It does not speak to visibility. And we did discuss visibility, but the direction was not to have visibility be considered.
I'm very confused, because I'm looking at page 10 here, and it says, open marijuana.
I, I understand, and we've already addressed that.
That's a definitional thing, so, so what we were voting on is whether to strike that sentence.
Right, yeah, among any other changes that are requested by the Commission.
Specifically on that, because to me, that implies that visibility is an issue, to me.
To me, it implies that it needs to be secured, but that's why I've changed the, that's why I've changed the definition, the, the beginning portion for you.
Okay, but we were voting specifically on that.
That's the motion on the floor.
And we had some yays, and then I just was looking to see how the people who haven't voted wish to vote.
Are we voting just on a single?
Just on striking open marijuana cultivation is not permitted on that, number two.
Yeah, I vote yes, strike that, I agree with you. Because it seems like it's not allowed anywhere.
I have no opinion, abstain.
Abstain.
This is a question.
My position is that I'm not in agreement with any cultivation whatsoever, so it, my vote, then I have to abstain, because it is, either way, it's, it's, no.
Can we get a roll call vote? Thank you.
This vote is just to strike this?
I believe it's just to strike and not the replacement language yet.
Open marijuana cultivation is not permitted, remove that.
Right, I proposed, I proposed other language, but that's not being voted on, it's just the strike.
Just ask a question first, actually. So assume we, we say either it's open, is not permitted, or it has to be visible or hidden, how difficult is that to change later? And of course, council will ultimately make that decision, but if it becomes a problem in the city, having it exposed to the public, people are stealing it or whatever.
Well, amending an ordinance, it would need, we would be directed to amend the ordinance, we would come back to the council, we would have a first reading, second reading, 30 days. So it would probably take about two to two and a half months. At fastest.
Now, roll call vote?
Commissioner Eldon?
Abstain.
Commissioner Gann?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, to strike it.
Commissioner Ung?
Abstain.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes, to strike it.
Commissioner Toprow?
And I think because of my statement, I have to abstain, because it's.
And Sheriff Goodman?
Yes, to strike it. It's strict.
So motion carries.
Okay. Could we, could we also remove the whereas, or are you pretty firm on that? Because that says what the state can and cannot do.
Yeah, the, and I, I understand your, your stance on this. For, for me, and I, I can certainly try to make it clear that these are the restrictions within the AUMA that we can do up to or less than this. I can.
Well, that would be nice.
But it would be hard for me to kind of do that on the fly.
I did, I numbered these. One, one through 11 are just facts, basically, that's what the law says. Number 12 on page 2, which is middle of the page, talks about whereas personal, commercial indoor cultivation.
Right.
Strong odors and so forth, you know, that's really, could be considered an opinion. You could, you could strike that without materially changing the resolution. The next two, 13 to 14, and 15, the next three, you might wanna look at. The experience of other cities, negative effects, you may or may not have to consider that in adopting a local law. That's up to you guys, if you wanna include 13. And 14 is, 14's kind of important, because it talks about the establishment of commercial cultivation, processing, testing, and so forth, without city regulation, I think that's the point we've made, so.
Yeah, I don't have any, I certainly wouldn't have any issue with that, because that's what we're talking about. We're talking about that, taking that time to make sure we establish the correct ordinances.
Okay, so we've, I numbered them, just made it easy. 15, which is at the top of page 3, I think is important, as it relates to why we've done an interim prohibition on commercial use.
Mr. Jones, wouldn't 15 be at the bottom of page 2?
Oh, I'm looking at probably the other, or, other resident.
It's on the bottom of page 2 for me.
He just wants to see whether we're paying attention.
And the rest of them, all throughout that page, I have checkmarks as required, and all the way down to the end, because those are just restatements. all the way down to the end, because those are just restatements of fact. So there are very little judgment or speculation in any of these.
I think we could, I think that Mr. Jones was saying we could strike item 12, or whereas 12, the, the personal and cultivation, potential adverse effects, because that is definitely like an opinion, essentially, an opinion-based finding of this body, and does certainly speak to adverse effects, and should you not agree with it, it wouldn't have a material impact on the basis for passing this, this resolution. And, and as I said, I can amend that language, I just can't do it right now, in front of you guys.
Strike it right now, couldn't you?
12, yes.
What I mean?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I'd prefer not coming back in another month, which, which we have to do.
Me too.
If you, if you have to go away and change things, then we need to have another hearing.
We have to get through a council process as well, so anything you can do right now would be appreciated.
Yeah, so I, I would move that we strike number 12.
Okay.
Okay.
And is there a second?
I'd second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Commissioner Gann?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ung?
Abstain.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Aye.
Commissioner Toprow?
No.
Chair Goodman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Motion to adopt the resolutions.
So, um, do we have a motion to adopt the resolution with those amendments, or do we have additional requested changes?
Uh, can we, can we include some kind of, I'm sorry, not yet.
So what you're asking is to have the resolution adopted, all three together, and I'd like to see if we can go one by one instead, because they are somewhat different in their natures.
There are two resolutions, they, they read...
There's three items in the, oh, you mean the striking of the whereas's?
Yes, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, those two motions have carried.
Suggested motion would be to adopt the resolutions, plural, as amended, with additional direction to the city council to direct staff to initiate preparation, study evaluation preparation of commercial use regulations, to be prepared prior to January 1st.
I think, I'd like to say finalized, instead of prepared.
That can be the commission's motion.
I, I would agree. Did we ever close a public hearing?
You didn't.
We did, I thought we did.
Although I don't know if you did the oath, but I'm pretty sure you closed the public hearing.
I'm sure, I'm thinking we did.
Motion to close public hearing?
Yes, thank you.
Are you opposed, some move? Did I not turn your line on?
So I just want to make it clear, because now I'm confused, that the resolution is just for these whereas's. But what has come to, to us today are essentially three line items in the resolution. So are we just kicking the can down for another month?
No.
Or can we address some of these separately?
So, so you want to address the...
Three items, the three bullet points.
So those are just outlining what is contained within the resolution. We have been discussing amending certain portions of the, the two resolutions before you, and should you wish to change any of these outlines of what's in the resolution, I would request specific amendments to the resolution. Or, yeah, if that's what you wanted to do.
I guess I'm just saying, I think it'd be easier to go per the three main topics with the whereas's as they go with each item.
Again, the whereas's are, are really leg, informative, but they're not the law itself.
Exactly.
The, um, the resolutions as amended by the commission are up for a vote, and with the striking of one whereas clause, and the amendment to the outdoor, first sentence in the outdoor component.
And, and to do that individually, I believe, to, to pull out sections would require you to go rewrite the ordinance, is that correct?
Yeah, should we require more extensive...
That's not what I'm saying, there's three separate recommendations here, and I'm just saying that we should look at each separate recommendation separately.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know if this was clear, but the, the recommendation is to adopt the resolutions, and then the bullet points are really just an outline of what's contained in the resolutions.
That's the staff recommendation.
Correct.
So again, if we change any of those, if we decide, oh, we don't want to do the last one, this has to be rewritten, doesn't it?
It depends on what your amendments are. So I, that's why I'm saying, if, if your request is to amend portions of the resolution, then, yeah, I would need to open up and amend the resolution, because this is just an outline.
So maybe one of these items are more favorable than others for some of us, so we don't want to go forward on some and maybe forward on the others.
But we can't piece them out, because they're one document, they're all contained in one document.
Yeah.
If you wanted to change the document, that's what we would need to do.
Commissioner Elder?
Sorry, could you just read the language you replaced for open marijuana cultivation?
So it was not replaced, it was just, it was just stri, stricken.
Perfect, thank you.
And if, I, I propose language, but it does not need to be replaced, it can just stand alone as, as a, as sub, D subsection two. It can just start at personal cultivation, it doesn't have to.
Kind of to summarize, this, this says...
Right, that's the intent.
This whole thing says that you can do cultivation for personal use, as long as it's in a secure location.
Yes.
That's one of them. We, we would like to see delivery available for medical marijuana as soon as possible.
Yes.
Right.
Even though the possible isn't part of the law. And the, the other says, "We prohibit any, any commercial sales until we've had a chance to come up with proper zoning regulations, et cetera, to manage it the way people want to." Those are the three pieces. So, we've discussed two of them already.
Yeah, I have a question. So, the police, they always say, you know, "Don't leave your cellphone in the center console, lock your doors," things like that. So we know about the secure location, but it doesn't preclude somebody from breaking the window to get your phone, to get your laptop, to get your iPad. So I would like to see something in there where, you know, we don't want people growing it in their front window. Yeah, my front door's locked, but you, you can see it right in my living room. And I'm sure Keith Kaufman would appreciate that. Well, that's what that says, but we've struck, "Open marijuana cultivation is not permitted." So I'd like to see some wording in there where it's not visible from the street, or...
We would need a vote...
From public areas?
We would need a vote from the commission, because that was discussed, and it was voted down, and that's why it's not in the law.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, no, I, that's...
You can, you can have us vote again.
If you wa, if you want to, that is something that I could very easily amend within this resolution, with regard to visibility from a, from a public...
From a public area.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's, that is a language that I could amend easily, if, if you had the votes to change that. I'd be happy to do that.
I think that somebody walking down the street, if they see it, it's inviting crime. And if it's my next-door neighbor, I really don't want criminals coming back.
That's the same, that's the same as saying, if you have a really nice piece of art visible from the street, we shouldn't allow it. I mean, it really is.
I, I guess you're right, yeah, we can be a nanny state, I think people are sensible enough to have somebody...
Do we have somebody drive up and down the street and say, oh?
Well, staff recommended, staff does still recommend not visible to the public. As, as most people that I think would cultivate marijuana would probably not want it visible to the public anyway.
Then...
I'm worried about my podacarpus.
I would support that language, too, just for the simple reason of it's, it's not just someone stealing art, or a CD, or something like that.
Hey, but wait, we, we voted on this.
Yeah.
So, we can't keep going back and forth, and we, I'm not sure, we can say, it could be visible from the rear, but not the front? It's visible, it's not visible, right?
It's, it's, so the way that it would read, should you vote to do so, it would read, D2, it would just begin, "Personal cultivation permitted under Health and Safety Code Section 11362.2, as amended from time to time, must occur in a secured location or within a locked structure upon the grower's own property, or a property with which they have explicit authority to access, in an area that is not visible to the public." That's the way that it would read. And that's, that, that's the additional language that would, I...
See, not visible to the public.
Yeah.
So if I wanted to turn my podacarpus into cannabis plants, my neighbor can see my backyard, so then it's visible to not me.
You could go a little further. Normally, we consider public visibility from a public right-of-way.
I, I move.
If you wanted to be very specific about it, I think we might have said that before.
Don't we have public place in here?
I'm fine if we can make that distinction, but otherwise, you know, it means that, and a lot, a lot of people, you can't do it anywhere outside.
My intent was from a public area.
My concern is, it's the same as keeping booze in your front yard, if it, or not in your front yard, but visible and easy to access.
That's not a good idea.
Nothing likes it.
So Mr. Jones recommended that we add, so in an area that is not visible to the public from a public right-of-way. So that would be a street or sidewalk.
And that's defined elsewhere in our code.
Podacarpus are going to be okay.
Yeah.
They really are podacarpus, by the way. But they do, the leaf structure is exactly the same.
So, does the commission want me to read that again, or are we...
Please read it again, so we can vote on it.
So, sub, D subsection two, "Personal cultivation permitted under Health and Safety Code Section 11362.2, as amended from time to time, must occur in a secured location or within a locked structure upon the grower's own property, or a property to which they have explicit authority to access, in an area that is not visible to the public from a public right-of-way."
Yeah.
And yeah, as, as Mr. Jones indicated, public right-of-way is defined elsewhere in the zoning code, so we wouldn't need to add, add a definition here.
Do you need to say "to the public," or just "visible from the public right-of-way"?
We could put it there, "to the public from the public right-of-way."
Well, that's, that's where it reads that.
His question is, do we need to say "to the public"? If we're saying, just, is not visible from the public right-of-way?
Can I suggest that the fewer words, the better, and the clearer it can be?
Okay, so would you prefer, "is not visible from a public right-of-way"? Is that the consensus?
That's what you said, that's what you said.
No. The way that reads now, "in an area that is not visible to the public from a public right-of-way." And I think Commissioner Ung was recommending that the "to the public" portion be stricken, and I think that's, that is clarifying.
Is that what you're saying?
Is that...
Perfect, yeah.
I don't want to misinterpret you.
No, I agree, sorry. So, are we voting on this now?
And I've read the motion, suggested motion once, and it includes the council, there was a...
I have more comments, and I, I want to kind of finish something.
And there's a friendly amendment to have the staff complete the commercial, be ready by January 1st.
Right.
And have the city council good with it as well.
Correct.
I mean, I think it's, I think it's just, okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so, um, for all this, how much input has the city staff received from the police and fire department? And I don't know if we can hear from the police department as, to our, to their position on this, and their enforcement of this.
We held several hearings and had a full presentation by the...
Oh, I know that we did, and I'm just wondering with, as it stands, how does the chief, if he would care to comment on, on this as it stands, because the police, the chief, and the federal, no, he's not, so it's not part of the public comment.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, so I don't know if the...
Well, I, I would suggest that all we're doing is passing this on to the council, and it's hard for me to believe that there won't be a lot more discussion at the council time.
Oh, yeah, no, for sure.
If the chief would like to speak, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I, I would like to hear from the chief, because he's the one who, and his staff, and the fire department, and the federal government, have this burden on their shoulders, and the freight train is, is going out of the gate.
So again, I speak from a position of public safety. I get to see and operate in the area of the things that go wrong, not right, when you're talking about medical marijuana patients that need medicine. I completely understand that, that's probably not who we deal with. So you have to understand that the things that I have, have an opinion on from a public safety standpoint, go well beyond just the scratching the surface. So a lot of unintended consequences are always the things that I talk about. I will tell you a couple, and it's, you know, I don't know, I don't know how much credence you have given to this as far as delivery, but the gentleman that came up and showed you the iPad with Weed Maps, it's incredible application, you can get it on your phone, you can go to the internet at weedmaps.com and look at it. I decided to do it for this meeting, because I figured someone was going to come, come up here and say, "There's, there's people doing it already." So it's true. So you pull up Redondo Beach, you get the closest one, there's one in Hermosa, they'll deliver it to you right now. Here's the problem, you have to have a medical marijuana card. So on Weed Maps, on that same thing, you click the, you click the button that says, "Get a doctor," and this is what it says. Online, medicalmarijuana card dot com, fill out standard patient form online, video chat with a doctor over your cellphone from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM every day. Get your recommendation letter, printable, in PDF format. Then when you click to have your marijuana delivered, because you're now a card-holding person, you can select from a variety of things. You can get weed, you can also add a edible snickerdoodle, and some smores, and a vape pen, and cherry cannabis quencher drink, and a 420 milk bar. These are the problems that we have to deal with. So when you talk about the delivery, or allowing the delivery of medical marijuana, I look at it from a standpoint of those people that are, that are not doing this for the sole purpose of using it as medicine. Mr. Elder, you asked about what some of those unintended consequences have been, that law enforcement has seen in other states. To answer that, the Medical Marijuana Registry in the state of Cali, in the state of Colorado, went up after the passage of recreational marijuana. You would think it would go down. Why does it go up? It goes up because it's taxed less, because it's a medicine, it's intended to go to people that are sick, so it's less taxed. So people will just get that card and select to do medical marijuana, rather than the recreational marijuana. And they're seeing that the, the balance has, has changed, now they're looking at, how do you, how do we go back and make those two things equal? So there are some, there are some challenges, there are some issues. I think I, I did provide some direction on some documents at the last meeting, that talked about some of those unintended consequences, namely, like the emergency room visits and kids, drug driving, that type of thing. So those are the things I look at. So my, my opinions go strictly by the enforcement of what we see. Of course, we do, we do not make the laws, we just enforce them, but those are the things that concern me. How do you regulate, to answer your question, how do you regulate if it's medical marijuana, or if it's recreational marijuana? It's going to be very, very difficult. So I don't, I don't really have the answers to that. I know that a, a process can be put in place through the business licensing, that will come up with all of those, all of those standards. You know, if it, if it's one person that's allowed, or, or 10, or two, I'm not really sure how, how the council would, would approach that, even through a trial basis. But we do know that in other states, Washington and Colorado, deliverables have become a replacement, or kind of a mobile dispensary, for people that have outlawed commercial sale of marijuana. So, all along the line, as these, as, as these laws have come about, be them for good intention or not, we deal with the people that find the loopholes in those laws, just like you're talking about growing in, in one's own house. You know, you can try to develop the language, someone's going to massage that language, and that's the, that's what we have to deal with. So the, the more that we can do, the better. There has to be 30 to 40 pieces of legislation in the legislator, in the legislature, right now, regarding marijuana, that have not been decided. I, I feel really bad for Jillian, because we keep having the meetings, and every time a meeting comes up, there's a new bill that passes. Well, there's 30 or 40 waiting. So I understand Mr. Mitchell's point of, let's, let's get it done, but we can't go beyond what the law says. So when the law changes quickly, law enforcement always has a hard time catching up. We had the same issue with drugs. You know, the law's constantly changing, and I'm constantly going back to Jillian and saying, hey, I need, I need an adjustment, so I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we wait, but I, I am telling you that it's, it's completely fluid, and that's, that's pretty much our position on it. I know that the more research that's done up front, especially looking at some of those unintended, unintended consequences from the other... unintended, unintended consequences from the other states, probably the better off we will be in Redondo Beach. I'm happy to answer any other specific questions.
Thank you, by the way, and I think, although Commissioner Mitchell was pushing for a date, I think what we really want to do is try to address some of those issues, make sure we do that as early as possible.
Yeah, just for clarification, I'm just, I'm just looking for a finalized draft of what language we would do to have in place. It's not, it's not a final final, but it's finalizing a draft. You have to start doing that now. That's, that's, that's something that we can at least be ready for before the end of the year. And then, yeah, as you said, there's going to be things that are fluid, but that doesn't mean we can't be prepared for a, a movement of the needle, once things move, if they move, exactly.
If, if the city wishes to regulate anything regarding marijuana, it's really important that we do it very quickly, because it has to be in place before January 18. Otherwise, licenses start to be issued by the state, and the city loses control. So, yeah, we are in a, we are definitely in a, in a time crunch, so to your point, we do have to get it done. Whether getting that done is, is putting in a ban or not, there, there are some significant issues with the state, and a lot of it has to do with what Jillian said, is tracking and tracing, and that would go back to how can we enforce. Enforcement's easier when you have a track-and-trace mechanism in place, which, which is not there yet. And, you know, I won't belabor the other points, but if you want to talk about cash businesses, and, and, and those are, those have been some law enforcement concerns with cities that have had, that have medical marijuana dispensaries, that those are still issues that need to be vetted out as well, so.
Let me clarify, though, because our recommendation is to put a ban in place.
For commercial, for commercial sale, yes.
Right, so we aren't just kind of waiting around to see what happens, and then take that time, but to do it as quickly as possible, so we can decide what we want to do. Which could be to ban it, it could be, you know.
Sure.
It's not our decision.
The council, yeah.
Correct. I would just, I would just want the commissioners, and eventually the council members, and our staff, myself included, to be sure in research how you do deliverables, if you allow them, because that can easily replace what you're trying to ban, and it could happen overnight.
That's a valid point.
He just showed you the map. So, and then there's a lot, there's a lot of issues, there's issues with, with the feds and their interpretation.
Of course, no matter what we do, there are going to be issues, right? Whether we ban it or not, that website's there.
I guess the argument is, will there be more issues or less?
I, I understand, I understand.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it. Okay, I forgot where we are.
You had a motion, and I don't know if you had a second.
Okay, is there a second?
What's the motion for?
Visible, not visible from a public right-of-way.
I'll second.
All in favor? Do we need a roll call vote?
Sure.
Sure, let's do roll call, it's fun.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Commissioner Gann?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ung?
Aye.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Aye.
Commissioner Toporol?
Upstein.
And Chair Goodman?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, now, can we, can you read again your suggested?
Well, with some help from our deputy city attorney as well, assistant city deputy?
Senior deputy.
Senior deputy, I stand corrected. And the motion is to adopt the recommended resolutions, striking the whereas clause. I read this earlier.
Striking number, whereas 12, or recital 12.
And amending?
Amending subsection D, subsection two, to strike open marijuana cultivation is not permitted, and to amend the language to read as follows. Personal cultivation permitted under Health and Safety Code, Section 11362.2, as amended from time to time, must occur in a secured location or within a lock structure upon the grower's own property, or a property to which they have explicit authority to access, in an area that is not visible from a public right-of-way. And the, all of the other provisions within the resolution would be as, as they are written, unless we have other requests to make amendments.
I think the only other one we wanted was the suggestion.
With the additional suggestion that, that council directs staff to proceed with drafting commercial use regulations, standards, and other criteria to be prepared on or before January 1st, 2018.
And voted, voted by the city council before that.
Voted on by the city council?
Well, discussed.
Okay, so I believe the, no, no, I just, I believe the way that we read it was a request that the council direct staff to initiate the preparation, a study evaluation, so the way that he had put it, to be finalized prior to January 1, 2018, is that correct? Or to be brought back to council? I mean, it will be up to council when the deadline is, but that's your recommendation, correct?
But if it's finalized, presumably, they're going to look at it at some point.
That would be the goal.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the recommended motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Vote? Upstream?
No.
You're opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, two opposed, so it passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was easy.
Okay, I guess next up is item number, agenda item number eight.
Eight.
Consideration of an exemption declaration can issue use permit to allow the operation of a dance school in an existing commercial building on property located within a commercial C4 zone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved, second.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Tonight, we'll have a presentation by Stacy Consolo.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. The site is located at 2772 Artesia Boulevard. It's on the southern side of Artesia, just east of Inglewood. It's a two-story commercial building that was built in approximately 1982. The Artesia corridor, of course, is primarily commercial, although to the east, there is a railway. Property to the south is residential senior housing, and the site is zoned C4. Personal improvement services, like a dance school, require CUP. The building is approximately 16,800 square feet on a 30,000-square-foot lot. There's a total of 66 parking spaces on both the main level as well as the upper deck. The retail space in question, units 107 and 108, is approximately 4,156 square feet. There are various uses at the site. There's an insurance office, a salon, a jewelry store, a business with painting classes, and an adult vocational school. Here's some further context. To the left is the subject site. There's a shared driveway, and then to the right is the Bass Western Hotel, and to the rear is Breakwater Village, the residential senior housing. Across the street, you can see the commercial businesses within the city of Longdale. They plan to open from noon to 8:00 p.m. on weekdays, and 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on weekends. They hope to have four dance studios. Two of them will be private, and two of them will be group. They plan to have a maximum of 15 students total on the site at any time, and a total of three staff members. The business owner requires a total of 11 parking spaces, and that parking calculation is based upon our code of one for every two students, plus one for every staff member. They do not plan to have any performances on site. This is an allowed use via the CUP process in the C4 zoning. There is adequate access already to the site. There's an existing two-way driveway directly to the commercial site, as well as the shared driveway. We did receive an email that was included in your packets from a neighbor living in Breakwater Village. He had some concerns about traffic flow on the site. He and I have had some positive dialogue since then. His main concerns are actually the vans for the adult school. The CUP for that vocational school allows for up to five vans to park on site, and then also there are delivery trucks for the adjacent hotel. He had some concerns about blocking the shared driveway condition. I did go out and visit the site to take fresh photos and to assess the site conditions. I didn't see any violations on site, so we have yet to actually visibly see that. I did speak with our city traffic engineer, who will be looking into the traffic flow of the site, and once we do see a violation, we can contact the individuals involved and work to make an easier flow. But I have to stress that this is not specific to the dance school itself.
Right, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't really affect our decision on the dance school.
Correct. So, because it's about the upper parking deck, and those vans, and the delivery trucks, it's, it's irrelevant to the dance school itself. The existing retail space has allotted 12 parking spaces, and the school itself only requires 11 per code. We did add some additional conditions to address potential noise impacts as it relates to the dance school. We suggested that the entrance doors remain closed during business hours, that all activities take place solely within the studios, no activities or performances in the parking lot. If the background music is heard on the exterior, and it results in complaints to the city, then the operator is required to reduce the volume at a level determined by the city, so we'd most likely have code enforcement get out there and do some testing. And then, a maximum of 15 students and three staff members on site at any one time. Staff recommends that the planning commission make the findings set forth in the draft resolution, adopt the exemption declaration, and approve the conditional use permit for a new dance school at 2772 Artesia Boulevard with the proposed conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Mr. Mitchell?
So, I wanted to go back to the proposed conditions. There we go. So, the only question I had was with regard to the background music, I mean, are we, are we a facility here that is air-conditioned, would be opening windows, I mean, or is it going to be closed at all times? Because I can imagine, if somebody didn't have air conditioning and had a door open, that, yeah, you're going to be able to hear music. So, I'm just trying to...
I suspect it would be an air-conditioned studio, much like other fitness studios would be. That's a standard condition we've actually placed on fitness facilities throughout the city. So, they've been able to accommodate it because they have conditioning in there.
And you haven't had any issues other places for the most part, so?
We have not.
Okay.
So, would the applicant like to speak?
Open public hearing?
Good evening. My name's Isaac Onowato.
Hold on, one second. Motion to open public hearing?
We already opened?
Oh, we did, yeah, I'm sorry.
I think we opened public hearings. We just did it, he's getting fast. Yeah.
Well, it's established, it's open.
Sorry, procedure, it's all yours.
My name's Isaac Onowato, and I'm representing Ohana Dance tonight, and I am open to any questions you guys may have. I would like to speak about...
Pull the microphone.
Sure thing. I would like to speak as to, I think there was a sound concern?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mitchell? There is definitely air conditioning in, in the building. This part of the building that is underneath the parking garage has four units to be able to accommodate the dance studio and the cabernet space next door. I'm open to any questions you guys may have.
Any other questions? Mr. Elder?
I actually stopped by the studio earlier today just to observe and see what it was like, and coming in from the rear, you could hear light noise, but it was nothing that, you know, that noise level, I don't think would disturb anyone.
Did they know you were coming, though?
They did not know. Surprise inspection.
Secret shopper.
Exactly, yeah, my daughter's daycare is a block away, so it was right on the way. But, no, I, I'm observing, the customers seem very happy.
Existing location?
Yeah, the existing location, yes.
Yeah, got it, great.
Just a little feedback for you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of this? Anybody who would like to oppose? Okay, I think we're done. Can we get a motion here?
I move that we make the findings set forth in the staff report, adopt the exemption declaration, and approve a conditional use permit on this case number 2017-08-PC-010. Subject to the plans, application submitted, and the conditions stated in the staff report.
And I'll second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's see. Item number nine. You guys ready? Consideration of an exemption declaration and consideration of suspension, modification, or revocation of a CUP granted by Resolution Number 3867 pursuant to the procedures for revocation contained in Section 10-2.2506K of the Redondo Beach Municipal Code. Said suspension, modification, or revocation is expected to include, but not limited to hours of delivery for an existing commercial kitchen on property located within an industrial I-2 zone. So, can I get a motion to open public hearing?
So moved, second.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, many times past, the commission has talked about and asked about, what do we do about enforcement of conditional use permits? Case before you this evening is just that, it's bringing back a permit for review. The options you have this evening are suspension, modification, revocation. In this case, the applicants have been very cooperative, as you'll probably hear from the presentation. This is a difficult situation, where we're at a boundary between residential and industrial, so it takes a lot of care and a lot of cooperation between neighbors and businesses to make things work. So, with that, we're bringing it back for your review, and with some good work from our senior planner, Antonio Guardia, I think we've got some good suggestions for you this evening to help resolve these concerns. So, with that, Antonio will give you a presentation.
Thank you, Director. Evening, Chair and Commissioners. The item is, again, a reconsideration of a conditional use permit that was granted to the operators of commercial kitchen facilities here at the industrial complex at 612 Meyer Lane. The planning commission retains jurisdiction over matters relative to modifications of existing conditional use permits, as well as enforcement of conditions of approval. Pursuant to the procedure section in the zoning code, the commission may suspend, modify, or revoke a conditional use permit under a variety of circumstances, including deeming the permitted use a nuisance. So, the property that we're talking about is in the industrial zone, and it has some conditionally permitted manufacturing uses. The conditional use permit was granted on August 15th of 1974 for wholesale kitchen, and a number of different uses have been operating there since. At the time that the conditional use permit was granted, the commission was primarily concerned with smoke and orders, odors, but noise impacts weren't really discussed or anticipated. At this time, staff initiated the modification of the conditional use permit to add limitations on operating hours, and specifically, delivery hours, to address the noise and traffic complaints that we've been receiving more recently. The, again, the site is on the east side of Meyer Lane, north of 190th Street. It's a two-lane local street surrounded by residential properties. It does have neighboring industrial and commercial uses to the south, though, and that comes into play with some of the, some of the circumstances that happen with loading and unloading of product there in the vicinity. So, the site is a, is a 22,300-square-foot rectangular-shaped parcel, or I'm sorry, it's a, building is actually two different structures with 14 tenant spaces. The structure is, again, 22,000 and change, square feet in size, and it was built in 1974. The, these are some pictures of the, the... These are some pictures of the structures and the existing site, as well as some of the neighboring the street surroundings. So the issue primarily seems to arise with the operations of one long-term tenant, Gelati Celesti. They've been there, from what I understand, since about 1980, early 80s. So they've been there over 30 years, and they've actually worked cooperatively with staff to address some noise issues that had arisen in the past. After speaking with some of the tenants there, and addressing these concerns, they were amenable to limiting their loading hours. At least the few tenants that we spoke to, that we reached out to, and I believe they're here in the audience, we reached out to the Gelati place, we reached out to a place that does the Biggs Cookies, and another place that does specialty kind of breads and things like that on the opposite side of the building, the property. Again, the tenant, once we were talking to them and talking about restricting their loading hours, they suggested that they have something put in place with on-street loading operations. And we said that we would send that request or address that with the engineer, city engineer, and the Public Works Commission, or potentially Public Works Commission. And we do have a representative from, a staff representative here from the engineering division as well. So again, the loading operations have created some noise and traffic impacts. The industrial complex is, it's a small, has small incubator spaces, and they don't have a designated large loading area because the tenants only receive small deliveries and pickups. Once a month, though, there is a large delivery truck that is dispatched to the Gelati Celesti, which sometimes has used the travel lane for loading and unloading. The deliveries at times have, from what staff understands, have come in the early hours of the morning, and that disrupts some of the residents. And that's the thing that we're trying to address today. So staff's recommending that the planning commission adopt the attached resolution, modifying the conditional use permit to add limitations on the operating hours, and specifically delivery hours from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And that concludes staff's recommendation. There were some items that were in the blue folder that were received after the packets were delivered. And again, there are several of the business owners that are here in the audience, and I believe they want to speak about this item and the limitations that we're imposing on them.
So this actually applies to all three businesses? This applies to all three businesses?
This would affect the... Yes, the conditional use permit is for the food manufacturing uses that operate at 612 Meyer Lane. And from what I understand, there's four of them. I only spoke to three of the businesses that are operating there.
Okay.
There's a fourth, I'm not sure, I think it's also a bakery, but I wasn't able to locate them at the site, the one I went up.
Commissioner Ginn?
We addressed this issue before with the Crown Plaza Hotel and the condominiums behind it. And I just don't know if staff knows what kind of delivery times we put there. They seemed much more limited than what this seven to four is.
I think the, after discussion with the department, the police department representative, there's delivery hours that commence at 7:00, and in certain areas, they go until 10:00. We thought that it was reasonable to limit it to 4:00 in this situation. But we wanted to...
Just curious, what we did with the Crown Plaza? Do we know that, or...
I don't know offhand, so I can't give you that comparison.
And I assume the people who are unhappy with the current situation are residential units that live next door to this property?
You know, it's a problem that exists up and down the street, but it's identifiable and can be, there's a nexus between these food operations. It is a narrow street. I travel it twice a day. I don't live within 500 feet, just so everybody knows that. But in fact, in the last couple of days, there's been a Mayflower moving van servicing the residents that's been parked in the traffic lane. So there's a shared problem here. There's as many residents moving in and out as deliveries taking place. One of the ultimate solutions here is not to go after the businesses and their hours, more so to set aside a reasonable loading/unloading zone on the public street, as we did for 7-Eleven, which I don't think we mentioned in the presentation, right around the corner that took those trucks off of Meyer Lane. City traffic engineer is here, he'll talk to you if you'd like about what are some of the other loading solutions. And we intend to proceed with those through the Public Works Commission as a better arrangement for all neighbors, be they residential or commercial. The seven to four recommended here takes care of the big problem, which is the early morning and late night situation.
How long has staff been receiving complaints about this?
You know, we have, probably for at least a year, a year and a half. But whether they were related to this property or related to a number of different 7-Eleven deliveries that were taking place further down the street, but we had a record of complaints. So we're looking for a reasonable solution for this business, as well as a long-term solution for the neighborhood. And that's probably a loading zone for all during business hours. We would not recommend, and commission can talk about this, that that area be restricted from residential parking after the loading hours expire. So we wouldn't, we would allow that to continue to be used for neighborhood parking in the evening. So that's kind of the approach. And we think the hours proposed are very reasonable. I would like to hear from the applicant and see if he thinks so as well.
I'd like to hear from the applicant. Who is the applicant?
Well, it's a city-initiated...
It's going to be my question.
It's a city-initiated item, but we do have several of the business owners that are in the audience today, as well as some of the neighbors, some of the residential neighbors that live nearby vicinity that are also in the audience, from what I understand.
Typically, we let the applicant, let's get the kind of business owner, speak first.
The individuals being affected by the proposed modification would speak first.
So whoever you are, come on up.
If you don't mind, I'll read this, because I might skip a few points.
No problem, but if you could say your name?
Okay, yeah. My name is Steve Edmonds, and I'm the president of Gelati Celesti at 612 Meyer Lane. I'm one of the 16 tenants who work there. We have occupied this space for 33 years, and in all that time, we have received only two complaints from neighbors. And that has been very recently. Concerning the large trucks loading and unloading on the traffic lanes, we very recently believe we have met the exemptions for that and unloading food. Until just very recently, we've always, if an 18-wheeler stops in our complex, we have a sign that's light, "Go and stop," and we always had someone else there directing traffic. And for 32 years, the police know it, they said, "You're fine." But recently, they don't want us to stop in the street. We understand that, we're trying to work with the neighbors. So we said, "All right, we won't take a lane and stop a truck." So for about the last month, we had two 18-wheelers come in, and they always come in seven or later, which is fine. But the guy said, "I can come in at 6:00, and I have that whole lane, one unit down from you, we load it up fine." And I said, "Well, that sounds good." Well, we stopped that because the two neighbors I never heard from, the guy was real nice, and the unit across the street, he said, "You know, we're kind of not up until about 6:30." And I said, "You know, I understand that. I thought that might be our problem." So we nipped that, and we loaded two trucks with that. So we're going back to the seven, you know, hopefully the 7:00. So just to continue here, so we have operated in the same manner for 33 years. We are commercially zoned complex in a residential neighborhood. We understand and acknowledge the safety issues raised by our neighbors. We would absolutely prefer, and our suppliers, send the smaller trucks. So what we have done, we have told so many of them that, and we probably have one or two trucks a day, and most all of them have agreed. They all have bobtails that back into our unit, no problem. Even the neighbor said, "We don't care, anytime from 7:00 on," and it's probably been working. The problem we have, we still, we ship to eight different states around the country. And the ones that go east of the Rockies only have 18 wheels, they don't have anything else. But if we had a yellow zone out front, they can always pull up, you know, like a 30-minute loading zone. We could pull up, the driver could pull up along the curb from 7:00 to 2:00, or 7:00 to 4:00 would be great. And when they are loaded, it is rare if they're there more than 12 minutes. Now, it does change a little for some reason, but generally, they call us 20 minutes before on the phone. We have the stuff out of the freezer, on the forklift, and wait by the gates. That's one reason we did it in the streets a lot. The truck pulls right up, put it in the back of the truck, shuts the door, and he's gone. And that's the majority of the time. So they weren't like sitting in the road for 30 minutes and stuff. So let's see. So to avoid, let's see, let me catch, to avoid disturbing our vocal neighbor, we have scheduled the, oh, we said that, or the trucks to pull up. So we have worked closely with the Redondo Beach Police Department, Redondo Beach city planners, and the council members, and do appreciate the difficult position there and the support they have shown us. We have taken many steps to work with our neighbors. And we have made the arrangements, as I say, most of the majority of the truck lines are sending the smaller trucks in. So our product supports several local Redondo Beach businesses, hotels, restaurants, dipping shops, plus we do most of California. We have met our neighbors in the middle. Until and if we can get a loading zone in front of our complex, we have made a sincere effort to mitigate any inconvenience to our neighbors while still conducting business. So we hope the planning commission will approve the plan and have the control hours were fine from 7:00 to 4:00, there's no problem at all. And the loading zone would really help at 612 Meyer Lane. Were there any questions on that?
Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Alden?
I've got a few questions. I know you do, you just mentioned you had local businesses in the city that you work with.
Yes.
Can you name any of them at all by any chance?
Yeah, the Crown Plaza, and Bella Gelato at the Pier, Mangiamo, and Manhattan Beach, Manhattan Beach Ice Cream, and Manhattan Beach on the corner.
You're going to have to stop, I'm getting hungry.
Okay. And then we have a Wanachill at 800 Pacific Coast Highway. And we have 500 accounts, but, you know, they go from the Upper Valley to San Juan Capistrano. We do Disneyland, Knott's Berry Farm, and Three Airlines. And I mean, it gets me, in 33 years, this only happened about a year and a half ago with one tenant. And then that irritated the other guy, because we tried to get it at 6:00 a.m. to get everyone out before the traffic started, which that didn't work, I admitted that, all right, but...
Thank you, I was just curious, I know all the local businesses you work with. Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ramirez? Who was first?
Yeah. I wasn't sure, because the condition is that the applicant shall apply for and fund the cost of creating the on-street loading zone. Who would be the applicant?
Well, it would be the business owner that would benefit the most from the loading zone, which was the representative of Gelati Celesti, who is actually requesting the loading zone.
Okay, so you would be the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure. And that's a condition for all of 612? So...
Let me, I have a report if you want to see it. The initial part, two years ago, from this person was the noise level was so bad. So through the city council, I went and hired a firm, that was about $800, that they were there at 6:00 p.m., they spent the night in the van, then at midnight, 3:00 a.m., and 6:00 in the morning, they did a sound test. And we got, and I have it here if you want to see it, we got 50, 46, 56.6 decimals. That is what a hummingbird's wings go. Anything under 60 is excellent. And we were 42, anything above 60 would be bad. And so that was the first thing, the noise is terrible. While it wasn't any noise, you could hear a pin drop when you walk in. Everyone mainly leaves around 5:00, so. And then from there, it started into, well, the trucks now are noisy, you know. You know, the whole thing was, I mean, you have to have trucks bringing stuff to us, picking up. You know, we make everything on our premises, but we do buy the dairy from two local dairies in L.A. And, you know, they also were coming at 6:00, we told them, you know, no more, they have to come from 7:00 on. But all these trucks and the ones that bring our chocolate and stuff, they back in, they're bobtails. So they back in, unload, and, you know, there should be no noise, there's very little noise.
Yeah, I think I get that. I was just a little curious why, you know, somehow, all these complaints have fallen on to this one business.
Well, okay, but that was a good point. Yesterday, for two days this week, a big Mayflower moving van was right across the street. And we got a complaint that it was our truck. It was moving the lady who complains in her complex, you know, and she, assumed she did, I don't know if it's a fact, but complained that it was our truck blocking the lane. So I mean, we get that every time a truck comes in with 16 units. Now, a lot of the other people don't have, the trucks we come, we have more trucks coming than most of the people there. But the point is, it's always Gelati. It's always our fault, she's out to get us for some reason.
No, I was just, so if next month they move, they would, under the conditional use permit, that loading zone would still need to exist?
Yes, and the condition's written, and we've reviewed it with the applicant, it's acceptable to them that they apply for or petition the city to establish a loading zone. Our traffic engineer is already in motion to design how, where, how, long, and how it would operate. And so I think it's a condition acceptable to the owner, which is beneficial to not only his business, the other businesses, and the residents in the area that have moving vans and other...
It was just unusual that it fell to one tenant on a property he doesn't own. And I take it, the application won't get denied, right?
Well, you know, and that was my next point, is that we're asking him to apply, and he's agreed to do that. We can't guarantee it gets approved, but we certainly are going to work very diligently to make sure we can provide one out there.
Why would it not be approved?
Well, we have our traffic engineer who can talk about it. There's always a great debate on length, design, distance, and so forth.
He tells.
Yeah.
I have one question. How long is the apartment building?
Tom, wait a minute.
The residential unit?
Tom.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I spoke to you.
And I'm done.
Commissioner Ramirez?
I have a question. So I looked through all the paperwork, and it said that you're okay with Monday through Saturday, the hours, 7:00 to 10:00, but it doesn't say what the current or what the previous hours were on that conditional use permit. I guess there were no limit on the hours?
Well, it really wasn't any.
Okay.
And it's a complex where we start at 5:00 a.m., the guy's going about 2:00. Jennifer's back here, the cook lady, they start about 6:00. And we pretty much all leave at 5:00, pretty much. We don't have any trucks come after 4:00, we just don't allow it, you know.
So, and then you're totally okay with the deliveries Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 4:00?
That's correct.
I commend you that you've been in business 33 years, and you've only recently gotten complaints on this.
Yeah, that's true.
And the conditional use permit's been around for 43 years, and this has just barely raised its head. One thing I'm seeing is that if we put in the hours Monday through Saturday, 7:00 to 10:00 operation, they may immediately become in violation of their conditional use permit if people show up to work at 5:00, even though they're quiet. So I think we may need to consider adjusting that, because I think the big complaint is not the sound meters, the... not the sound meters, the, the sound, you know, less than a hummingbird, it's not the workers, 'cause I think it sounds like they're real considerate of the neighbors, I think it's more the trucks and blocking the traffic. And not even necessarily the noise of the trucks, although refrigerator trucks are a little bit noisier, but blocking the traffic.
Yeah, let me point two things out, you just said, one, the people that come in early, five of them and they all have their own car, they don't make any noise. Once you're in our complex, you could stand outside and don't, we don't have ovens, we don't have big mixers, there are ice cream machines and we do ice cream cakes in bulk, but you, you can't hear a thing outside. And we started about thirty days ago that all the trucks need to turn the compressor off, everyone works with, is our dairy, our chocolate truck, when you turn on the Meyer Lane, turn it off, they're, fine, no problem, we don't, most of them flip it off in their cab and then it's just, they turn it back on when they're driving away. So, we implemented that.
Okay.
Yeah, these conditions are just for delivery.
Oh, were they?
No. Actually, the conditions do cover the hours of operation as well.
Oh, sure.
And that was, does that carry forward?
I think it is. And we could, yeah, we could amend those to accommodate the tenants if the commission wishes to do that.
You may wanna hear testimony as well.
Okay, yeah, thank you, I don't have any more questions right now.
Yeah, I just wanna commend you for having the business for so long and echo Senator
Rodriguez's comments because to have such a nice business in, in our community, that's great. And I think also that when people moved into the area, they must have realized that they were buying into an area with a commercial zone. And I think this is something which we see over and over and people commit to buying or renting in an area where they see activity. And I think that's also part of the issue that, you know, if you're going to live next to a place like this, and you've done above and beyond for, for this.
Thanks. And Dorothy here is the owner of the complex and I'm guessing on the years here, but I'm guessing close to fifty years that you owned it, I don't know that for a fact. And the people across the street, again, I'm guessing here, but had to be, you know, ten years after this was built, again, I don't know any of these for a fact, but, so what you said, I so agree with that. If I were buying in any neighborhood, I'd drive by in the morning, afternoon, night and on a Saturday, a few times to see, you know, if it's loud, party noises or big trucks going through, so I totally agree with you.
Well, I commend your sensitivity to running the business because you have a very highly perishable business as well.
Yeah.
And timing is of the essence for this type of business.
Yeah, it is. I did it half my life, thirty-three years.
No, no, it's great and, and it's great to have you in our city, thank you.
Yeah, and we love it here, we never wanted to move from the spot because it's, you know, everyone lives, not everyone lives in Redondo, but close to it and, you know, we eat at the restaurants, it's just, we all know it so well, go to the local gems, it's nice and everything.
I'm just glad you don't live next door to me, but for really different reasons.
I know, I was gonna bring ice cream, but I thought that was...
Big, big spoon.
So, any other questions from this gentleman? Would any of the other applicants like to speak?
Oh, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm being mentioned as a...
Please, uh...
So, I just...
Yeah, all, all this is recorded, so you, you need to speak into the microphone. And...
Should I receive?
A motion to your receiver. Hi, my name is Malati Ramanujam and I have the third business there, mentioned as a food business. And I'm a nutritionist and I run an operation for special diet. Every child born in this country, after they are born, they do a heel prick test. I'm sure many of you have kids and you, you remember, after they were born, they take a drop of blood from their heel and they test for a condition called phenylketoneuria. It's called PKU. If they are born with this condition, it's a deadly disorder. They have an enzyme missing in their body or if it's, it's not working good. So, they are, they are restricted as to what they can eat. Their diet basically doesn't have, there's no meat, no seafood, no dairy, no eggs and no flour, no nuts, no lentils, no rice.
No flour.
Basically, everything under the sun is excluded. So, I, I just wanted to give you a background of what my business is, that's why I'm giving this intro. So, this is, like, occurrence is rare, these conditions, it's not only PKU, which have been screened since nineteen sixty. So, the kids, once they are diagnosed having this disorder, they are put on this extremely restrictive diet. So, what we take for granted, you can't go out to the supermarket and buy a loaf of bread, they can't have it. If they have a small serving of fries from McDonald's or anywhere, that's it for the whole day, they cannot have anything else. Even the vegetables that they are allowed to have, it's a restricted amount for each meal. So, that's where I come in because I have a son who has a similar condition. He's thirty-five years old. So, they have to be on a restricted diet excluding all of this and breads or cookies or anything, they have to have prepared from special dietary mixes, like a bread mix or baking mixes. That's what I manufacture over there. I actually don't manufacture, I have created all these mixes, which a co-packer does it in Rancho Cocomanga. So, this co-packer, I direct them what they have to do, how to mix them, I get all the supplies from different parts of the country and have them shipped to them and they package all of this in mixes. That is my main business, selling these or shipping these mixes through FedEx or United States Postal Service. I go there and drop them off. And every three months or every four months, I get a supply of these mixes that are being mixed in Rancho Cocomanga, delivered through a truck. And I have restricted them to deliver it after seven o'clock in the morning. And I supply to different hospitals or patients directly.
Excuse me? We have a, I guess, three minute time limit.
Yes, I know. I just wanted to give you an introduction about my company.
Quickly, quickly.
Anyway, I also do a little bit of baking of bread using these special mixes, for which I have to start the work at five o'clock in the morning for the baking. So, I don't actually do the baking until nearly eight or nine o'clock, but I have to do the preparation by five o'clock if I don't do that. I have to deliver it to the US Postal Service within the same day because of this restrictive diet, all these products that I bake. And I bake only like once a month, maybe once or twice a month. And during the holiday time, maybe a little bit longer, maybe three times a month. So, that's my basic operation times. And I do have delivery trucks bringing in, like I said, maybe three months, maybe four months, every, once in a while.
So, again, to move things along, so, you're operating within the constraints of what we were talking about.
Yes, but the timing is the one that I'm concerned about. I do need to start at five o'clock in the morning to get everything prepared.
But that...
But the baking, actual baking is not done.
Excuse me, we, we've talked about that, so I think that's consistent with the other businesses too.
So, this is my thing and I am, this is a medically supervised diet, so it's not retail business, so people don't come there to buy it from me. And my company's name is in formulary of different states, including California.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for the opportunity.
Mm-hmm. Do we have, uh, any other applicants? Come on down.
My name is Terry Rodriguez, I live at five nineteen Meyer Lane, which is directly across the street from six twelve. And in full disclosure, I'm also employed by Gelati Celesti.
That's a horrible community.
Yeah, really. So, I just wanted to give the perspective from, actually from a resident and from the other side of the street. So, I've actually had that condo for twelve years and spent in my family for twenty-seven, so I'm very familiar with that neighborhood. And as, I don't wanna be redundant, Mr. Jones did an excellent job of summarizing and so did Steve, I don't wanna be redundant to that, but that, that moving van story is just a sample of the, the special conditions on that street, 'cause that moving van was doing exactly what we got in trouble for and I know that the police are called on those calls. And actually, when they respond, I, I don't really know what they would do because what do you say to someone who's moving? You, you have to live there until there's parking available, I mean, you just can't...
Tell them to get out, move.
So, so I understand, I understand the special needs of, of that street. And also, I wanted to bring up that there's an inordinate amount of red curb on that street and I know this because my father, retired police captain, was on that HOA, the Ocean Gate HOA, a couple decades ago and he had a lot of red paint, and it was a very unpopular decision. So, I think we could be creative with the red curb. I know in front of five eleven, there's one parking spot, a bunch of red and in front of my house. And the way that Mr. Anastasi, not a fan of his, but the way he built our driveways, when you come up, there's no amount of red curb in the world that's really gonna give you visibility. So, all that red curb is, is nice, but it's not really solving. So, I think this loading zone for residents and for people on the other side of the street is, is gonna solve a lot of problems with FedEx, UPS, Amazon deliveries, not just us that it's gonna help. As a resident, I'm not, I'm thrilled to have a loading zone, because every time I order something, I'm, I start to sweat because I think, my God, where are they gonna park? And they, they park in my neighbor's driveway and they get mad at me and it's just very stressful. It's just a, a very special street, it's very narrow, it has a lot of red curb, it's very busy, it's very loud with leaf blowers and the trash man three times a week, beep, 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 so it's not like it's a quiet street anyway. So, I just think that the loading zone would be just one less hassle for residents as well as my other hat, my Gelati Celesti hat as well. And that's what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And I have another card for Karen Yoder, I think it is.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I live at six oh nine Meyer Lane, which is directly across the street from six twelve and I have owned a townhome there for nineteen years. And yes, I saw that there were businesses there when I bought the place, however, I did not expect getting deliveries at two, three, four, five, six in the morning. I've actually have started, I have lodged complaints with the police department several years ago and was told there was nothing they could do. It didn't happen regularly back then. I think complaints have probably gone up the last year, year and a half because those things have become more frequent. So, I'm, so I'm more concerned with the hours, I think that the seven to four is a good, I wanted to say that I was in favor of that because it's several times a week sometimes, I mean, just within the last month or so, there was a delivery at four twenty in the morning and these trucks are very loud, they have backup beepers, even when they don't use the backup beepers, they pull up, the engine noise is very loud, the brakes squeak, sometimes they make grinding noises, there is a release of steam. I sleep with earplugs and I, I still get woken up. So, anyways, that, that was the main. Sometimes they, the trucks have to seesaw back and forth and every time they go, they back up, the, the backup beeper. So, it is very loud. But I'm just mainly concerned about the early morning hours. Seven o'clock is great.
These, these conditions do require seven o'clock is the earliest time they can deliver.
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this subject? Does the commission have any questions of the traffic engineer or anybody else?
I just had one question about, what is the cost of applying for a loading zone or constructing one that could potentially be borne by the applicant?
Hi, Gene Kim, traffic engineer for the city. There's not really a, a fee that's associated with the application because it's, it's based on commercial and retail use and so it's something that we as a city provide. Yeah, there's no real application fee.
Great, thank you. And, sorry, well, just to bring you back really quickly, I also, when I was driving through the area to look at it, noticed all the red zones. Did you have any thoughts about modifying the red zones or is that something that seems reasonable or unreasonable?
Um, that's absolutely reasonable, although a lot of the red curb that's out there is mainly due to site visibility concerns. Parking number one is very impacted along the six hundred block of Meyer Lane and we have gotten a request before to kind of go out there and take a look. In the few areas that we did take a look, we thought, hey, you know, the site visibility, we really need the site visibility here and so that's why that red curb is in place. However, that doesn't mean that, you know, we're, we're unable to go out there and reassess the red curb.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner?
Yeah, regarding the use, so this industrial complex could conceivably be used for other purposes than for the manufacturing of food products.
Yes, there's a, Commissioner, the, there's a number of other uses that are allowed by right. I know that there's a recording studio, they actually submitted a letter that was included in your pack and they've also been attended there for quite a long time. There's cabinetry shops, there's other uses that are there. The, there are some uses that are allowed with, subject to review and approval of a conditional use permit and that's because there could be some externalities or some negative effects on the neighborhood, in particular with odors and noise, and that's the reason why food manufacturing uses are one of those conditionally, conditionally permitted uses.
So, so...
And that was the only condition use permit that was issued to this property.
Okay, so, so if, if another business, a permitted business were to become a tenant there, none of these conditions would apply, they could start earlier, they could have deliveries at, at two in the morning.
That's correct, the, this is specifically applicable only to the uses that are allowed with a conditional use permit and would not necessarily apply to the other businesses that are allowed by right. There are other municipal code regulations that govern noise and other things like that as well, though.
Okay, just wanna make, make that clear, okay, thank you.
I, that, that confuses me a little. I, I thought that the, so the conditional use permit, I thought it applied to a physical location and if a different business moved in, that the same restrictions would apply. But I heard, just heard you say that's not true.
So, there are other business, businesses within this incubator industrial development. Those that require CUP are being addressed right now.
Okay.
Those that don't, don't have the restrictions of the CUP.
If somebody moved into the same location that they're in now.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to query that for me.
Right, typically with uses that are allowed with a conditional use permit, they're made aware that they are governed under certain conditions and they have to abide by them and that's when they come in initially.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve...
Close the public hearing.
Oh, you wanna do that?
Yeah.
Can I have a motion?
Move the closed public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I got a little...
And we're moving.
Yeah, okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion for approval of the exemption declaration conditional use permit, case number two zero one seven dash zero eight dash PC dash zero one one with its three findings and eleven conditions.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment and strike number two. I think the operating hours from seven AM to ten PM, there's other businesses in there that don't require conditional use permits and so they can operate at, they can come in at three o'clock, four o'clock, as long as they're quiet and...
I, I thought those were delivery hours, I didn't know those were operating hours.
Item three, item three is delivery hours.
Those both were, Tom, we just missed that one.
And so, my friendly amendment is to strike number two and not limit the hours of business, but to uphold the delivery hours.
I'm down with that.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, move. How's the element this back? So, next we have a public hearing to consider a recommendation that the city council adopt the two thousand seventeen technical midterm update to the city's two thousand thirteen, two thousand twenty-one housing element and an exemption declaration.
And, Mr. Chairman, is public hearing?
It's a public hearing, we have a motion.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, we're pleased to bring back the housing element update after its sixty day review by State Department of Housing and Community Development. We have with us this evening Veronica Tam, our housing consultant, who's been with us for a number of years. And tonight, we'll have a presentation, I think, from Sean Scully to kind of kick it off, or maybe a tag team.
Thank you, Aaron, members of the planning commission. Tonight, yes, we'll actually have our expert, Veronica Tam, lead us in this presentation. I'll be navigating the PowerPoint.
And I'll make it very brief, in terms of the housing element. Thank you, Sean. So, the housing element is part of your general plan that you're updating right now, but the, the housing element is on a different track, so that's why we're doing it right now today. The housing element has to look at the needs in the community, and not only your current needs, but also future needs in the community. It needs to look at the constraints to housing, particularly regarding to governmental constraints. We also need to look at opportunities, resources that you have in meeting the housing needs in your community. And lastly, the housing element has to have a strategy of, an app, plan of actions, how you're going to achieve the goals, policies, and objectives in your, in your, in your housing element. The housing element has to be reviewed by a state agency, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, for compliance with the state law. That's the only element of the entire general plan that requires that kind of stringent review by a state agency. Now, the city adopted the 2013 to 2021 housing element on March 18, 2014. Unfortunately, that was behind this statutory deadline. And I think the, the last presentation, two, three months ago, it was explained why the city missed the deadline. But by missing this particular deadline, you're subject to a four-year review by, as required by state law, and that's what we're here tonight, is the midterm review of the housing element. By state law, you have to adopt the midterm review by October 15, 2017. Now, if we meet that deadline, and if we meet the next update deadline, which is 2021, if we meet that particular deadline, your housing element will be put back on an eight-year cycle, so then you wouldn't be having to do this four-year update anymore. So, that's the reason why we're doing it, this kind of schedule. Next slide. In, in terms of the housing element, this update, we're calling it a technical update, because we're really looking at the housing element, what didn't have to be changed, we didn't touch it at all. We only updated some basic statistics regarding housing market conditions and local data. We review your residential sites inventory and make sure that it reflects the current status of some of the sites, and what's happening with, what the city's accomplishments have been. And we review the accomplishments the city has achieved since adopting the housing element in 2014 and made adjustments as necessary. One thing that is important to bring out is, it's, as part of this update, you don't get a new arena, you're just working with the existing arena that you were given, and we're really just like, it's a progress report, this midterm update. Again, the range, the regional housing needs allocation is not an obligation to construct housing units, it's just to demonstrate that you have the capacity to construct units. Next. In terms of the steps that we have taken back in May, on May 15, 18, we brought the housing element before you to, you know, have a, a review, before we submitted that to the state. On May 23, the state received it and initiated their sixty-day review period. On July 13, we had a conference call with the state to go over the comments that they had and what the revisions would, would need to be. Then on July 18, we did receive a letter document from the state stating that the city's housing element would be considered to be in substantial compliance with state law, provided that it's adopted on time and provided that you deal with the SB two, which is the next item on tonight's agenda. When we submitted the draft housing element to the state, they came back with some very minimal kind of comments, one being that they want to look at a little bit more about, learn a little bit more about the public outreach activities as it relates to your overall general plan update. So, we expanded the discussion on that. They brought up the issue regarding a CUP requirement for housing development and as a constraint, and that is a, an issue that they've brought up multiple times in previous reviews of your past housing elements as well. So, this time, we added a program action that the city would consider, just raising the, the minimum standards of administrative, administrative review to fifteen units. So, that is a proposal in the housing element that will be brought back to the city, Plan Commission and City Council later. Definition of family, there is a definition of family in your zoning code that would be considered too restrictive, because it defines how many people should be in a family, and that's something that you're not allowed in state law to do that. So, what we are recommending is, in, as part of your future updates, your zoning code, you look at that as, to make sure that it complies with fair housing laws in, under state and federal regulations. Quantify objectives, they want to see more specific objectives that the city would include in the programs. We added that in, overall, the city will facilitate development of three hundred units. You've met a lot of that already with some of the, the, the single-family homes that you have built, and, and some of the projects, the mixed-use projects that you're working on. So, you've met quite a bit of that already. And in terms of mixed-use development, we added an objective of two hundred units, but those are not mutually exclusive. They're, 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 overall, we're talking about three hundred units, within that maybe two hundred may be, may be mixed use. But again, these units, these quantify objectives are just objectives, they're not obligation. You, you know, there's no, there's no penalty if you are not able to meet that. And lastly, well, not lastly, the next comments regarding known net loss because of the South Bay Gallery Improvement Project, as it's being reviewed and, and considered, is quite different from what we had originally included in the 2014 housing element. So, the state wanted to know, wanted the city to continue to monitor the South Bay Gallery Improvement Project and make sure that, you know, as it's approved, you will continue to have the ability to meet your regional housing needs allocation. Next, regarding small sites, the state is a little concerned that most of the sites in the city are small sites, so we added a program that the city will look at ways to facilitate either small lot development or consolidation for affordable projects. And supportive housing, that's just a, a technical kind of error that in, in the previous housing element, Program 14, it was mistakenly left off supportive housing to, to address the provisional supportive housing in your zoning code. That is a requirement under state law, together with transitional and supportive housing, to address that in your zoning code. It was mistakenly left off, so we're putting it back. And lastly, I think this is Measure DD, because the state wants to just make sure that the city, as the city, it, as people use Measure DD or do rezoning or general plan amendment and invoke Measure DD, that you do, again, also do an assessment that with all these general plan amendments and zoning, that you have the ability to meet your regional housing needs allocation. But we, we basically think that, you know, that's may not be an issue, because you're doing general plan update that will have to go through Measure DD. And so, after that general plan update, you may not have a lot of amendments or rezoning requests in the future or in the near future. So, those are the comments from the states. After we submitted the, the revisions to the state, they sent us a compliance letter and stating that if adopted, it's revised, and also, once the city amended its zoning codes to address the provision of emergency shelters, then your housing element would be considered compliance with state law. So, we're at that point right now. So, the next step that we are hoping to pursue is to take this to the city council on September 19, and then submit the adopted housing element to the state by October 15, and, and you will have, hopefully by then, a compliance, full compliance with state law. You're going to have to initiate a new housing element update in 2019 or 2020 or so, because your next update is due October 15, 2021, and usually takes about at least a year, a year and a half to do a full update. So, the city will have to initiate that in, in, in a couple of more years. So, with that, I, I think the, the recommendation is that the planning commission open the public hearing. I just thought should, to do the recommendation.
Sure. Thank you so much, Veronica. So, our recommendation with that is that the planning commission open the public hearing, receive and file all documents and correspondence on the 2017 technical midterm update to the city's 2013 and 2021 housing element, accept all public testimony, and then close the public hearing and adopt the following resolution by title only, waiving further reading.
Have we got the whole public hearing opening backwards now? Because we already opened.
Yeah, you, you did.
You guys are just messing with us.
Yeah, we're, we're jumping the gun a little bit.
Is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak on this subject? I suspect there is.
We open the open?
It's open.
I know.
Holly Osborne, District Five. And I actually looked at the penultimate version of this, which I had a printed copy of, and was looking online with the new one, trying to find the differences, and I did not see this presentation, and I actually came up with three of the same items she came up with, so.
That's good.
Anyway, yeah. Okay, so, the first item I have has to do with some of the mixed-use stuff. On page seventy-eight of the penultimate version, which I think is seventy-nine of the new, when you refer to the Legato project as one hundred fifteen units, yet on page eighty-seven of the penultimate, which I think is now page eighty-eight, you refer to as one eighteen. So, I think that's just a typo. You have one fifteen in one place and one eighteen in the other. But where this comes up, at least I think this is where this has come up, when you talk about the new section, Program Twelve, which is mixed-use, you added a sentence, and now I see why you added it, but you said, "The city has the goal of achieving two hundred housing units through mixed-use development," and she referred specifically to that two hundred. I guess they wanted you to put a goal in there. But if that goal is including those one hundred and fifteen from Legato, first of all, I don't like putting a goal in to begin with, especially a goal you don't know if you can achieve, because the last time we had a number, goal, into our housing element, then a lawyer said, "Well, you've got this number in your housing element, and you haven't achieved it yet, therefore, you have to approve my plan," and they were trying to intimidate the city council, and the commissioners are approving their stuff. And so, I thought, why set yourself up, why give them ammunition to shoot you with by putting you, putting this two hundred number in unless you absolutely know that you can achieve it? And if the Legato project of the one hundred fifteen is part of that, achieving it for two hundred, I'd remind you that it actually hasn't been approved yet. I think it had been approved in May, but I think it was sort of unapproved again in June. It was three to two against, but the last meeting.
I don't want to take your time, so.
Well, okay, anyway, whatever it is, let's just say, whatever it is, the ground hasn't been broken yet, whereas for the other numbers that she referred to, the fifty-two unit place and whatever, the ground's been broken. And I just don't want to put a number in that we can't show that we've met, and then have some lawyer say, "You have to, because you approved your housing element and the people agreed." So, that's just a means precautionary thing. Now, the other thing I had noticed, and which she also referred to, part of that same sentence is, you said the city is considering removing the minimum lot size. Oh, that, that kind of scares me, okay? Now, did you add that deliberately? That was also on that page one oh seven, right before the adding of the two hundred units. I would not have liked you had to approve the minimum light, lot size. I, I think you have to have.
So, I think you've reached your time.
I'll, I'll make a motion, you can go another minute.
Okay, all right. I mean, you, you want your typos fixed, don't you?
They're not my typos, though.
Oh, oh, excuse me, you want to direct them to fix their typos.
We want the typos fixed, yes.
Okay, all right. Yes, I know that. The other thing, and you've got me off my game now. Oh, it was, when you added the restrictions, your, your old restrictions on, on multi-units were four units or less, you, you didn't have to do stuff, and then you changed that to fifteen units or less. She referred to that, too. Again, I didn't see her presentation, but all I could see was, you're making something easier for people to do with that review here. So, unless the state was specifically made you put that fifteen units or less in, you know, as a, as getting your plan approved, I'd, I'd like to go back to the four. Okay, so now I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Her point about the specific numbers and objectives, I certainly understand that. Is that something we're required to do, or?
Yeah, let's get Veronica up here, and she can translate all of the, the state mandates that we, we wrestled with to get here.
The CUP requirement for multifamily housing for four and above four units, that has been a comment from the state since your 2008 housing element, and they brought it back again in the 2014 housing element, now 2017. So, we've been kind of like, said that we will, we'll look at it, we'll look at it, and this time, they said, no, you've, you're done looking at, we want you to do something about.
Couldn't we have said eight?
Pardon?
Couldn't we have said eight?
We, we, they wanted the city to remove the CUP requirement altogether, but we were, we went back and forth, and, and fifteen was something that they were willing to consider, so.
Now, is this something that we have to do in a specific amount of time?
The implementation program.
I think it's like, it's part of the general plan update or something like that. So, you still have a little bit of time.
We have some time, we have some time.
Yeah.
But, but that's the, the state's mandated action for us to take.
Okay, so, along those lines, the, the specific numbers, like three hundred here, one hundred and fifty there, is that, is that something where you're negotiating and you have to put a number in there?
You have to put a number, and it's in state law that you're required to have a number in there, but based on what you have already done, we think three hundred total is reasonable, because you, you've done some already, so.
Maybe Veronica can answer the question about units, is that in addition to units that we've already approved, or is that not? Because I want.
Is that total?
That's total, okay.
Total, so whatever that means.
Right.
Okay, whatever we'd like it to mean, and whatever the state would like it to mean.
Good total, yeah.
Or, yes, okay. Commissioner Helder.
So, I'm just concerned, because the state goals are generally, are, in some of these cases, very different from our goals, so I'm concerned how we can make this as defensive as possible, because things like our arena allocations are just atrocious compared to neighboring cities. How do we set ourselves up for success, so that if something like Senate Bill thirty-five passes, we're, we're not, you know, up a creek? Are there any suggestions you have about any language in here? I know you've probably gone through this back and forth, to find ways to, to give us as much leeway as possible. Are there anything, anything else you would recommend that we add in here to, to try and give ourselves some local control over a lot of these situations, rather than, than giving everything up to the state?
I need you to be a little bit more specific in terms of what you're looking for, though.
Sure, so just ways to, to give us, you know, going from, from four units to fifteen units. We're giving up control in a lot of areas where we, we no longer have the ability to really enforce a lot of things locally. If developers come in, they can just build whatever they want, so I'm curious how we...
Well, we actually, the way we wrote it in the, in the program is that you, you will still be able to review the design and the, and site plan. So, it's, we didn't give up the design and site plan review for you, just at the development standards that would go through, Aaron, so.
And does the recently passed mixed-use moratorium, does that impact any of this? What does that do to the entire process?
I didn't hear that. Well, the, it, the way we're going to have to explain to the state is that you are doing your general plan update, so that's the reason why you're having a moratorium, that you want to make sure that you, your land use policies and development standards and densities are all in sync before more of these projects are going through. So, that's the explanation that we're going to present to the state.
Yeah, and just to be also very clear, all, all of the criteria for imposition of... Yeah, and just to be also very clear, all of the criteria for imposition of a moratorium, we feel are met, and that involves investigation of infrastructure and other things that are important for us to do. It doesn't materially change what these mandated housing goals might be in terms of numbers, but it does cause us to need to probably very proactively in this plan update process, look at sites, which our G-PAC's doing, identify appropriate locations, and perhaps even shift some of our development potential throughout the city. So this is all in alignment, believe it or not, all of these things.
And that's part of the reason why they wanted to see the no net loss program and the measured DDo's when you're doing, when you're, you know, doing something in one area, that you balance it back out so that you continue to have the ability to meet the regional housing needs allocation. But in terms of moratorium, we, if we are asked that question, we'll have to explain that because you're doing a general plan update at this time, so.
Mr. Trump?
Yeah, I just wanted to, first of all, commend you for your work, because it's kind of heavy-duty stuff to juggle. And I had the same question as Commissioner Elder about the moratorium, because, you know, just as a city, we're going to start feeling more and more pressure coming from Silicon Beach, you know, and this is a very desirable area, which, you know, obviously Manhattan's more desirable, but, you know, it's going to start coming. I mean, yeah, you know, they're close to the freeway.
Pretty soon we'll be the West Side.
Just look at the real estate prices, right? So, you know, it's really an issue, and I think we have to be extremely well-prepared in this, so I thank you for, you know...
Yeah, I think the bottom line is, when you do the general plan, you're going to have to balance.
Yeah, it's going to be a very fine dance.
And then make sure you continue to meet the regional housing needs allocation that's through 2021. But in 2020 or 2019 or so, you are going to begin a new regional housing needs allocation process, and I think, you know, Aaron and his staff is going to be very aggressively lobbying for the city for a reasonable regional housing needs allocation, because your current number is quite high, so.
Yeah, I think unfortunately, you'll be retired by then. So.
Myself, we'll be working hard on that.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Hahn?
So heads up on that. No, just one more thing. The, one thing that I was kind of curious about that came up in your presentation, which I don't remember reading in the housing, the thing about the family, how many family? So do we have a formula that says, you know, five people per 1,000 square feet max regardless? Or, because, you know, you can say you have a family of 20, and they're crowded into 1,000 square foot.
Well...
So how is that enforced? What is, you know, I mean, we should have something which says, you know, five people per 1,000, for 1,000 square feet or something.
There are two separate issues relating to that, because from a zoning perspective, you don't have the authority to regulate what constitute a family.
Sure.
So that's why that definition of family is different. But in terms of occupancy standards, it's really just the fire code, the building code, the fire code, that really governs how many people can be in a unit. And unfortunately, those numbers are pretty general, generous, I should say, in terms of how many people can, like, can be within a certain amount. There is that standard, but that standard's based on the uniform fire code and the building code. They are pretty generous, so.
So we don't dovetail the two in concert with each other to, it would be a good idea because that could be a real...
You automatically, you adopted the building code, so you already have that standard. You just cannot define a family to be limited to a certain number of people because of...
But we can enforce it through the fire code that...
Yes.
I mean, is it some, I mean, what does it look like? Is it like five people per 1,000 square foot?
Oh, no. No, no, no.
Oh, exactly.
Building occupancy requirements are quite high. I mean, it could be as little as...
I think it's 150 for the first, however many, and then every 75 square foot.
I'm sorry, what was it?
It's a very high number, a shockingly high number.
Shouldn't we be dealing with this number? I mean, if it's...
You can't, because that's what the state standard is.
See, the state fire marshal and the local, yeah, we've adopted the state of California's fire code, and we enforce that.
And what's like a ballpark number, just out of curiosity?
It depends on the type of construction, type of design, number of exits.
Housing, private housing.
Well, for commercial buildings, it can be as small as one person per every 15 square feet. You see the number on this, there should be a number in here.
Yeah, 119.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that they're sleeping here, too.
That's one body per every 15 square feet. For housing, it's a larger number.
I want to say it's, yeah, well, it's like, I think it's...
Larger number of square feet per person.
One person per, like, 150 square feet for up to a certain number, and then beyond that is 75 square foot.
It's big.
It's big.
It's a big number.
It's a big number.
Okay.
It's unfortunate, like, yeah, it's a big number, but you have to comply with the standard sets in the...
Okay. I just wanted to just check, because, you know, it could, you know, yeah. It could get real interesting as people kind of pack themselves in.
I think the key point in all of this, yeah, the key point in all of this is that our definition is no longer valid, and we can't define it.
You cannot enforce what constitutes a family.
Right, right, right.
Done?
Done.
Commissioner Hahn?
There was a, I'm sure you read it, the lengthy two-day article in the L.A. Times about this whole process, and the state and the cities, and are you familiar with that?
I'm not sure which article you're talking about.
The Los Angeles Times wrote a two-day exposé on this, on this whole subject, and they said that this whole process in the state of California was, I believe the term they used, mortally flawed, starting from the state down through the cities. And it said that many cities in California pay absolutely zero attention to this, don't do anything to it. And they said the state has never once, in the history of this happening, imposed any kind of fine or penalty on a city who just ignored it.
I don't think that is actually true. The one example that, you know, everybody can point to is the city of Pleasanton. Jerry Brown, actually, at the time, he was still Attorney General. He joined force with legal aid of Northern California to sue the city of Pleasanton on their housing element, and the city lost. And there was an injunction placed on the city. The city was not allowed to issue any building permit, commercial or residential, for more than, I would say, for more than a year.
What year was that?
That is probably 2012 or so. I, that's when Jerry Brown was still there.
I'm just curious, because this article in the L.A. Times was a prominent article. I remember I sent it to you.
You know, I think maybe it said there was only one or something like that. In other words, it's rare.
But it really went, I was just curious if you'd read it, because it went into the fact that this, that this entire process, starting at the state, was so, was fatally flawed, and that it was really...
It's a game.
Unfortunately, it said it was nothing more than a bureaucratic deal to keep people busy, that nothing ever happened because of it? Nothing, there was nothing, there was no result, there was never a result to what all, everything that all the cities do and everything.
I would not disagree with you that this process is flawed in many ways, but...
Well, no, don't disagree with me.
Right, no.
I'm asking you if you read the article in the L.A.
I didn't read that article, but it's not the, it's not, it's not a perspective that I'm not familiar with, but be that as it may, that is the law right now.
I like the way you said that.
Yeah.
Yeah, wasn't it? Really good.
I got to remember that one.
Not familiar with your...
No, I just, I read the article, and I was really floored by it. And I was just curious, if they went, we read all this and listened to your report, and then when I think about this article, it's troubling, because it just, the article was emphatic, that there are many cities absolutely don't pay any attention to this.
There are...
Or allocate any resources for it.
I would say that's probably half and half. It depends on the local jurisdictions. Some communities take it very seriously, and some suffer significant consequences because of that, like Pleasanton and, and like my, another one of my current clients, Sacramento. They've been involved in a lawsuit for over four years now. And they have an injunction. They haven't been able to issue building permits since spring.
Well, we have enough of those. We don't need to.
So, yeah.
That's any permits. That wasn't, that was any permits.
Not just, not just the stuff you don't like.
And just for the commission's benefit, I'm looking at a sheet of paper right now with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight bills in Sacramento right now about housing. They are looking to step up the, get the attention of the local jurisdictions in a big way, so it's, we're, it's an interesting time right now.
I was just curious if you read the article. That's all. No. The answer's no. Thank you.
Any other questions? So shall we close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
In favor?
Aye.
Can we have a resolution? Do we have a motion? Sorry.
I had a question, though.
I'll ask you a question.
Yeah, I was, you know, one of the, the...
I'd be faster here, buddy.
One of the recommendations is, you know, to adopt that we would move this forward pending, you know, resolution on the emergency shelters. But our emergency shelter is the next one. So is that kind of backwards, that we would be approving this one before we have resolution on the next?
There was a comment to that effect.
Well, it's not pending. These are clearly two separate recommended amendments. One is amendment element, and the other one is amendment specific to emergency shelters. I think it was spoken in the slide that we wouldn't have our element certified, and the state would not act upon it if we did not take action on the emergency shelter amendment. So they're not, they're not linked, except by certification.
Okay, so we can, we can, we can, we can...
You can proceed on this.
Position this one.
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody like to...
Make a motion?
Motion to adopt the 2017 technical midterm update to the city's 2013-21 housing element of the general plan and exemption declaration.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. And now we come to item number 11, emergency shelters. So this is an application to consider amendments to the zoning ordinance relating to emergency shelters, including definition of terms, designation of zoning location, and adoption of development and parking standards for emergency shelters.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, for, I think, at least two...
A hearing?
Absolutely.
Do I have a motion about this tonight? You know that. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Could we have a staff report?
Absolutely. Now that the hearing's open, we'll get right to it. Item 11 this evening. These are amendments that for at least two or three housing element cycles, we haven't gotten around to doing, and we heard from the state, it's time that you pick a location or two and provide for this use in our zoning. So we'll have a presentation on it from Antonio, with Veronica riding shotgun, I think.
Right. So again, these amendments being brought forward tonight are in response to the State Department of Housing Community Development's comments to update to the housing element of the city's general plan. In the review of the housing element, the state pointed out that the zoning code needs to have provisions creating an opportunity for establishment of these emergency shelters somewhere within the city boundaries, and they needed to accommodate the estimated number of people that are in need of these types of services. The locally adopted ordinance may impose certain parking and development standards, like lighting and separation or distance requirements, capacity and maximum length of stay, which is six months. So that's all included in this draft ordinance or the resolution. HCD requires that these revisions be implemented by October 15th as a condition for certifying that the housing element complies with state law. There were two zones that were identified as locations where opportunities exist for development of emergency shelters. One is inland, and the other one is within the coastal zone. The first one is in the I-3B industrial area, which is located in the northeast corner of the city. It's adjacent to the 405 freeway, and it's kind of at a diagonal that goes from Marine to Inglewood Avenue. It consists of several properties, including the Chevron gas station, a mini-storage on Inglewood Avenue, and three hotels that are accessed from Marine Avenue. Oops. Oh, skipped it too much. These are the, this is the site showing, and this is a picture showing one of the underdeveloped sites, the mini-storage location that we identified. And this is a location that is along on Arturo Street. It's near some various multimodal transportation options for anyone that would need to use those. The second location is in the coastal area. It's a zone I-1A district. It's four parcels that make up what is commonly known as a dirt lot. It's, you know, any development on that is subject to review and approval by the Coastal Commission, and it's at the corner of Francisca and Crutuda. There's a mini-storage facility that's located across the street, and for many, it's been vacant for many years, and like I said, identified as an opportunity site. And that's, oops, did I go the wrong way? There we go. That's some recent pictures of the vacant site. That's from the, the one on the bottom is from the street from Francisca, and the other one is from top, from the bank parking lot. And again, the recommendation is to open the hearing, accept the testimony, and adopt the resolutions recommended to the city council, find the amendments are exempt from SEQA, and amend the zoning code to allow the emergency shelters in the I-1B zone and in the I-2A zone within the coastal land use code. We did receive a couple of items that were in the blue folder, and I think those, the commission received those, and that concludes our staff presentation.
Are there two blue folder items?
I believe there's only one, from the property owner of the I-2A property, the coastal zone property.
Well, let's proceed. Anybody from the public like to speak on this? Since we're the applicant, right? Then let me ask a question. In terms of the recommendation or the suggestion from this blue folder item, I was just curious as to your thoughts on that, which was to change the zoning to allow, in addition to shelters, what did he call it? Multifamily residential? I'm just curious.
Well, it certainly never hurts to ask. We received this letter today. We don't have this site, and G-PAC's studying all its locations in the community, but this is an industrial property. It certainly could be looked at, but this type of request for multifamily zoning should be made through our general plan update process. What the commission's doing this evening is identifying and supporting an amendment to allow a certain use, not requiring that use on their property, but just putting that forward. We'll present that, this request to G-PAC and see how it goes with the committee review.
Also, the other question I think that was raised is, so this is another one of those things where we're required to do it, but who would pay for it? I mean, it's a reasonable question. We don't know. So this is, it's kind of like the housing element, where you don't really have to build it, you have to plan on it.
That's correct. Well, every city in the area has already approved a location for this.
It's just adding to your, to a list of permitted uses in the zoning code. It doesn't require, you know, whether you... It doesn't require, you know, whether you, you know, you build it or not. Now, most of these emergency shelters for homeless, if they were built, they're built by nonprofit with federal funding. And federal funding doesn't come by very often for this type of facility, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Not a lot happens, no.
Okay.
Commissioner Topor?
Yeah, I'm a little confused, so if you bear with me. So these pieces of property are owned by other people, and they're both like dirt lots, and they could be, if I understood right...
One's developed with three hotels, a mini storage and a gas station.
I thought a dirt lot partner, so I thought it was...
There's no dirt. So one is developed...
Go back to this.
Yeah, I saw the dirt there, so I thought that was the...
That's going to be an old area, because there's a third hotel.
The third hotel there. So I thought I was, yeah, and then I realized that, and then I thought, oh, they must be talking about the little green strip there.
No, it's within that zone. And when we add a use to a zone, we add it to all properties with that zone. In this case, there are three properties that have that I-1B zone.
So the hotels become the emergency...
They become eligible to build an emergency shelter if they wish to.
The hotels, or the state?
Or the gas station.
Or anybody.
Or the mini storage.
Anybody who owns that property.
And these are emergency shelter, but they're permanent structures? They're not, I mean, I think of emergency, I think of tents.
Veronica?
I'm a little confused. I'm sorry.
It's a type of housing, really.
No actual construction is required. This is no different than adding maybe like a nail salon as a permitted use in a commercial zone. Nobody's going to require adding that unless somebody comes in and proposes it. So adding the emergency shelter for the homeless, the one reason why I say that the funding doesn't come by very often, it's not a winter shelter, it's not a temporary shelter, it has to be a year-round, permanent shelter. And so it needs to have funding that's sufficient to operate a shelter for 20, you know, 365 days a year.
So I'm assuming that the money should come from the state? Because usually if there's a fire and all that, the state provides money.
If one is being...
So then the state is going to buy this property from these landowners to make a, I'm just trying to, I'm having a hard time...
That's why it doesn't have...
Is that the right scenario?
I wouldn't presume the money's coming from anywhere.
Right. No, but, but I mean...
So if...
So this is all the land? This is not never going to happen, but we have to do it because of the state?
If a nonprofit happens to be able to come by funding, and they can approach the property owner to purchase the property or lease the space, however, you know, that circumstance demands. But it doesn't have...
If somebody wants to build a shelter, we have a place they could build.
That's correct.
Correct.
Yeah, but they, we're not going to give it to them. They have to buy the land.
But you could, if you could acquire the land, you could build it there. That's all we're saying.
Right. I see. Okay. Because I, I mean, and I guess that's why I'm so confused, because I think of emergency shelter, there's an earthquake, there's a nuclear bomb, whatever, and then you need to have a place to scramble to, you know? And I mean, there's the parking lots at North River Brumman, that would be great places for tents, but I'm like, what was going on?
That is emergency shelter in the event of a disaster or whatever, but that doesn't actually fall under the definition of this particular piece of state law.
I see.
This state law requires it to be permanent, year-round shelter.
And what state law does that fall under?
That I don't know, because it's not really housing-related. That's just, I guess, emergency...
I guess it's tent-related, so it's another department.
State and federal regulations.
You guys know of tents.
FEMA, FEMA disasters?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just...
It would be FEMA, wouldn't it?
It's a combination of FEMA, Homeland Security, and a bunch of other agencies. Yeah, that's a different thing than what we're doing is...
Right.
Allowing...
Planning department would be the ones that would be dealing with the tents being safe for...
Yes. My role in a SEMS-NIMs emergency, I know it well, we have to roll out the process to do that. This is different. This is a location that allows an emergency shelter, but not a requirement to construct, or we just have to have a location to do that.
So if we have like a really horrible homeless population, then this would be forced on by the state? I mean, I don't know. I don't understand.
If somebody wants to build a shelter that's a full-time...
Take away emergency. Don't think of emergency. Just take the word emergency out.
Just emergency. So like a rape center, or a homeless center?
Forget the emergency word. A shelter that's permanent.
But why do they put the word emergency in? I'm sorry, I'm just...
It doesn't matter. Somebody defined it this way. And all we're doing is saying, you can build one of these.
So we're contaling to just bureaucracy that has no meaning? I mean...
Excuse me, did you read the article?
We would call it a good faith effort to comply with the state law here.
All right, whatever. We geneflect, you know? Okay.
Yeah, hallelujah.
Okay?
Okay.
I mean, as okay as it's going to be.
I made my point, right? I made my point, right? Okay.
Mr. Elder? So I realize we're not actually talking about building something, but even allowing this...
Close that subject. Go ahead.
But we could, we totally could.
But even allowing the zoning in that first location concerns me a little bit, because it's between the two worst intersections we have in the city. There was already a significant homeless encampment there that during cleanup, they, one of the transients tried to murder one of our police officers with a homemade zip gun. So it's already been a very problematic area there. So it's significant safety concerns, but just wanted to throw that out. Even allowing it kind of concerns me a bit.
It's better to concentrate the problems in one place, you could say. Good. But anyhow, so noted.
Just my comments.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, so can we have a motion to close?
I make a motion that we pass, that we adopt the resolutions recommending...
Wait, don't we close public hearing? Do we already close it? Motion to close. Look here. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Moved.
A motion that we adopt the resolutions recommending that the city council amend the zoning ordinance to add provisions for emergency shelters in the I-1B and I-2A zoning districts.
I did have a question regarding the first resolution on the I-1B.
Be quick on your question.
I'm trying.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Why is it that, you know, it was just confusing, because when I saw the table of permitted uses, you included all the types of industrial zones, but on the second one, you were very specific to I-2A. I would have expected just the I-1B in the I-1B resolution. The reason why it was confusing was, under the emergency shelters, under the first one, the I-1B, you actually listed the I-2A, which isn't permitted. So it contradicted your second resolution.
Yes. And what we do is, it's not required that we include all of this for, but it's included for context. So you're seeing more of the code, so you understand where it fits in the code.
It just happened that your second one didn't.
Correct.
But the first one, when you included it, contradicted your second one.
Right, and there actually is no I-2A. Okay, 1634.
Right, so the, just a point of clarification. So we have the inland section that governs the uses on the inland, and then we have the second resolution, which governs only the sections that are in the coastal zone. And in the coastal zone, the only industrial zoning classification is the I-2A. There actually are no locations in the inland area that are zoned I-2A.
Right. So to be clear, and I think Antonio was very clear, but...
I just want to make sure, because on the first resolution, it designates I-2A as not permitted.
Right. And I-2A doesn't exist in that zone. The only place I-2A exists is in the second.
Okay, understood.
Could have it permitted there, too, but there's no zone, no I-2A zone in the inland area.
Motion made second. Motion is made second. On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Where are we?
That was easy.
We're in new business. Yeah, we in Thailand, or, we're in new business.
You didn't close that last public hearing.
We closed the public hearing three times. Is there any new business? Is there any public participation on non-agenda items? Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carol Skinner, and I live in North Redonda Beach. As we all know here, the city of Redonda Beach housing element identified the Galleria project site as an ideal location for development of high density residential uses. So Forest City comes in, and they have their development plan that you're all very familiar with, and it's pretty high density. My question to all of you is, does the planning commission or the city of Redonda Beach have a legal authority to limit the amount of residential units that they might come up with? In other words, force them to scale it down before you approve their project? That is my question to you.
Would you like to take that?
We can go ahead and answer that. Usually, public participation, we don't, but the city does have authority to modify, reduce, and change a project if certain findings are made to do so. In other words, there might be reasons, we call findings reasons, for doing that. That's part of the hearing process and part of the environmental review process, to hear comments from folks as to what their concerns are, and to adjust the project as necessary to, as best possible, meet those concerns. So we're having a public, I was going to make that announcement soon, but when we get to the next item, we'll announce that we're having a public meeting on the draft environmental impact report for that project on the 26th, Saturday.
At Nordstrom, that one?
And it's moving over to the Hallmark shop within the mall. It'll be within the mall, and we've changed the announcement and fire at this point. So that's the best time to come in and talk about the project and how you're affected. We appreciate you waiting all night just to say that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commission items and referrals to staff. Do they have any commission?
I would just say that unfortunately, I can't make the September meeting, so this will wrap it up for me tonight on the planning commission. So for all of you, I spoke over you and didn't turn on my light. I apologize. I hope it's better in the future for you. And if I remember to turn the DVR on, I'll be watching you guys, but other than that, good luck to you, and it was fun.
Do you have anything? Well, taken back right now. I didn't think it was going to be so soon.
Are you termed out?
No.
His term is up.
My term is up. I didn't apply.
Oh, you didn't apply? Okay.
No, I didn't.
Wow.
Nothing?
When's the next general pack meeting?
The 26th?
The 31st.
31st of August. Last Thursday of the month. 7:00 PM, second floor of the library.
Thank you.
So I have kind of a question, and maybe I should know this, but the bill's dealing with additional dwelling units? You know, the end of last year, they passed it.
Accessory dwelling unit?
Yes. Accessory. I don't recall ever hearing anything about that in these meetings.
No, we are operating under state law, and on our list of probably four or five code amendments to bring forward, that's one of them.
Okay, so we just haven't gotten there yet?
We haven't gotten there. A lot of cities haven't, and a lot of cities are confused about how to properly apply state law relative to them. In fact, we had a...
Is that the granny flats?
Yes. It's called an accessory dwelling unit now, so we give it the right name. It's for old and young grannies, unrelated grannies, grannies related by birth or marriage.
States already named a name once.
And again, this is a perfect example of the state and how they're dealing with housing, because we have no regulatory authority, other than building and fire codes, for some of these accessory dwelling units, the way, if they come in, in certain circumstances. And we're still going through those circumstances, and we'll be able to bring that back.
We had a briefing from Jenkins Law Group, who represents several cities in the area, and got the latest. And so we're getting close and prepared to bring forward some discussion. Where we can, we will assert local authority into the state law, as you've done here with your other actions this evening. So there are some places where you can actually insert some local control, and we'll show you all of those and ask your opinion and recommendation, so we can get something passed.
But it's pretty much our one and a half zoning.
That's about the way it works, yes.
Good way to put it.
Items from staff?
No, I think we're good.
Council action on planning commission matters?
Nothing to report.
Motion to adjourn?
Can we adjourn in memory of Tom Gann? Let's adjourn in memory of Tom Gann.
Not in memory. Whereas, whereas, we're going to adjourn.
Whereas.
Whereas.
You guys could have a motion to adjourn in memory of...
Somebody has to, I thought you were making the motion.
Oh, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
I'll be mad.
All in favor? Aye. Probably not, but we'll pick it up next time. Thank you.
I don't know, did we close?